Good evening. Welcome to the April 23rd, 2018 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Baker lead us with the invocation this evening, so please rise for that and then continue standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in Heaven, we give you thanks for this beautiful day, for the beautiful spring weather you've brought to Troy, and for all the blessings you've given each and every one of us. We ask that you continue to bless us this evening as we work through the city's issues, welcoming the voices of all who are in attendance, and having council work together as a team for the good of the city. Please be with those who need your help. There are many of them, and some we're not able to ask. Please be especially mindful of our children in Troy and throughout the state and country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Mr. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present? Before we start, I would hereby excuse the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Abraham at the special budget study session of April 16th, 2018, due to being out of the city. Support. Vote. Moved by the Chair and supported by Councilman Henderson that we excuse the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Abraham at the special budget study session of April 16th, 2018, due to being out of the city. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. It's so nice to have so many people show up for those recognitions this evening. We have three this evening. C1 is a proclamation to celebrate the 40th anniversary of the Troy Community Chorus Board. President Jason Darwood and the Chorus Board are here, and I'd like to make a presentation to them this evening if they could meet me at the podium.
Thank you.
I'm just curious why you didn't sing the National Anthem or something?
Oh, say, and you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars grew the perilous fight. All the red hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rock is red glare, the buzzwords sing in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Well done. Come on in here close. Okay. It's an honor and a privilege for me to present a proclamation to the Troy Community Chorus on their 40th anniversary, and I'd like to read this into the record. It's a great story. Whereas the Troy Community Chorus was created in 1978 by a congregation of talented Troy residents, including founding member Shirley Darje and out-of-towners. It was sponsored by the Troy Adult and Community Education Department, the Troy All-City Choir, as it was originally called back then. It made its first public appearance singing Handel's Messiah at the Christmas Concert at the Troy Athens High School Auditorium. And whereas, since its inception 40 years ago, the Troy Community Chorus has grown to include close to 70 members, who bring a wide range of talents, including instrumental music, dancing, and a soloist into their highly anticipated performances. And whereas, the talents of the Troy Community Chorus have been showcased in a variety of venues, including the Meadowbrook Hall, the Somerset Collection, Cobal Hall, and the Old Tigers Stadium. Isn't that nice? The award-winning All-Volunteer Chorus has also performed at the Detroit Festival of the Trees, the City of Troy's annual tree lighting ceremony, the Statue of Liberty Benefit, Detroit a Glow, Detroit Tigers Games, and of course, much, much more. And whereas each year, the Troy Community Chorus brings their passion for music to the residents of Troy through various community-held events, including the Troy Days Festival and community-wide concerts held during the spring and winter. And whereas, the Troy Community Chorus has become a respected facet of Troy's community by emphasizing the same values held high by the City of Troy. Its diversified membership reflects the city's desire to create a diverse, yet cohesive, community. Also, their dedication to their music and this city is evidenced through their weekly rehearsals and concert schedule. So now therefore it be resolved that Detroit City Council does hereby congratulate Detroit Community Chorus on their 40th anniversary and for being dedicated to the promotion and production of high-quality musical entertainment through the involvement of this community. Be it further resolved, the Detroit City Council joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the Troy Community Chorus on this important milestone and recognizes its impact upon our community as a talented and dedicated community organization. It's signed the 23rd day of April, 2018, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations on your success, and thank you for what you do for our community. Thank you so much.
And I get to stand next to the mayor.
I get to stand next to you. Thank you so much. Somebody want to say something? You've got the plaque.
Mr. President.
Yes. On behalf, my name is Jason Darwood. I'm the president of Troy Community Chorus. I just want to thank the City of Troy and for this proclamation. Also, just want to add, our concert, our spring concert is this Friday at Troy Athens High School, so we put on a really good show, so feel free to drop in. Thank you.
C2 is a marketing award from M. Parks in the Seasonal Program Brochure/Activity Guide category, awarded to the Troy Recreation Department for their Fall 2017 Recreation Guide. And I'd ask Elaine Boe to come forward, the Recreation Director, to help me present these plaques.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight I wanted to introduce Alyssa first. She works full-time for the city for us. She works half the time at the library and half the time for us. At our annual conference in February for the Michigan Recreation Park Association, she won two marketing awards. I'm really excited about it. The first one was for our seasonal brochure from this past fall, and the one, the other one was for our outstanding website, which if you haven't seen it, you just have to go ahead and look at it. Really good information, so thanks.
Thank you, Elaine. Let me, on behalf of the Troy City Council, Alyssa, I want to present these to you and congratulate you. I took a look at it. What a great job you did. So on behalf of the City of Troy, congratulations. And I have a second plaque to present. This is a marketing award for Outstanding Website, and I'd like to also present that on behalf of the Troy City Council and the City of Troy. Congratulations again, Alyssa. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings, so we will move to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We have several that have signed up to speak this evening. Please review the rules and regulation portion of the agenda as we will strictly enforce those rules. And because we have so many this evening, I'm going to read a portion of those rules to make sure that everybody understands the rules this evening. If you look in the packet, it will say, "There is a timer on the City Council table in front of the mayor, but there's also a timer on the podium that shows the exact same information that's at this timer. It turns yellow when there is one minute of the speaker time remaining. It turns red when the speaker's time is up, and we will strictly enforce those three minutes this evening. In order to make the meeting more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use bad language, or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any person or group. If you do, there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of the speaker's comments for any rebroadcast of the meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that could subject them to civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city." First I'll call on Sandra Smith, Troy resident, wishes to speak on H1. I'm sorry, H2.
First of all, I want to thank you all for your dedicated service to the city and the people of Troy. My name is Sandy Smith, and I have been a Troy resident for 27 years and a member of the Troy Racket Club for 37. My father used to tell people that if I was left alone in an empty gymnasium with one other person, I would manage to step on their feet. 37 years ago, I sought to prove him wrong by taking tennis lessons. Embarrassed by my lack of athletic prowess, I only wanted to take private lessons. After being turned down by every other club, I found the Troy Racket Club. I will never forget how both the pro and the front desk people greeted me with a warm, friendly smile and no judgment when I arrived without a tennis racket and wearing the wrong shoes. They treated me like family. This July, that tennis pro and I will celebrate 35 years of marriage, and I can tell you, we literally raised our children on those courts. Both of our children, now adults, cherish the times that they return home for a visit and play on those same courts and reconnect with the Troy Racket Club staff and members, who always treat them as family. This is the atmosphere Don Pierce and the managers have fostered throughout these 40 years. It's a philosophy that Tom Schoen also shares and will lead the Troy Racket Club into the future. It is this sense of community and family that has people returning year after year to the Troy Racket Club, many bringing their own small children, not only to learn the game of tennis, but to experience this bond. It's so easy to get swept up in fancy presentations and the newest technology. I know. My profession has probably benefited the greatest from new technology. As a critical care and cardiovascular nurse for over 40 years, I have seen countless lives saved from new technology. But please remember that not everything needs to be fixed. I know in my profession, in spite of the advances, the one constant has always been the human connection. I know I will always be grateful for the warm and friendly banter I receive each and every time I enter that club. It is what continues to separate this club from so many others. It's what makes everyone feel this sense of family. Because it's not always just about tennis. We are called the City of Tomorrow today, but the one thing that remains as important today as it did 40 years ago and will 40 years into the future and beyond is its people. The people are here. The people have spoken. It's now in your hands to show what matters to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we, I call up the, Mr. Miller, is there anything that can be done with the heat? Could we turn the heat down in here by any chance? I see everybody in the back just doing that. We'll see what we can do. Next I'll call on Jeff, I'm sorry, Tom Schoen, Troy resident, wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you all so much for listening to the concerns and feedback from the Troy Racket Club members regarding the tennis facility management contract. It's evident that we have a caring and passionate group of tennis players here. I sincerely hope the additional time to research and vet everybody involved has resulted in the council having a clear picture of the strengths and challenges of all the bidders. At the end of the day, you have two operators whose proposals met the RFP requirements and can both run a tennis facility. If you select All Court, we will lose outstanding pros, employees, and members, many of whom are Troy residents, and take on the risk of a management group with a known history of conflict. If you select TRC, you have a proven track record of service to the city, a thorough and a chronologically detailed plan of capital improvements. We also add a great deal of financial strength, as well as business experience and acumen. I personally have the skills to manage the Troy Racket Club. I bought a small manufacturing company over an industrial row. In 1999, we had six people. They were working four days a week because they were so slow. We've since relocated three times, grown to more than 40 people, and are doing 10 times the business we started with. Don Pierce has owned TRC for 40 years. I want to make it crystal clear, he's not going anywhere. He's committed to the seamless transition and has been instrumental in researching and obtaining quotes for the new air structures, heating systems, court resurfacing, insurance, et cetera. Keep in mind one other thing on that, though. Don was a full-time practicing attorney until he required, excuse me, until he retired a few years ago. He was always involved in the large capital and personnel decisions, but he had not run the business on a day-to-day operation. That was Kathy, Rob, Kurt, and the other pros you see behind me. And that will remain the same with the TRC bid. That will not be the case with the All Court bid. My wife's a senior VP for a large ad agency in Birmingham, and like all wives, she's smarter than me. She pointed out that the RFP states in numerous occasions that the goal of the RFP was to do what's in the best interest of the City of Troy, and we're here to ask you to do just that right now. Do what's right for the city. After two weeks ago, the 4-9 council meeting, there was so much talk and going back and forth about the city manager report. City manager report, a couple of things are clear. You guys have a really tough and occasionally thankless job, and secondly, it's clear that the council puts in a great deal of time, thought, and care in what you do, and I just say, we really appreciate all you guys do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I'll call upon Jeff Hudson, business owner, wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, Council. My name's Jeff Hudson. I'm an attorney. I practiced law in the City of Troy for 38 years with Dean and Fulkriffson. It's a privilege to be here tonight on behalf of the Troy Racket Club and my former partner, Don Pierce. When we were here a couple of weeks ago, I listened with considerable interest when opposing council had recounted with great fondness the fact that he and his family had played at the Troy Racket Club and he'd watched his family play there, because it's a scenario that we've heard here the last few weeks as we prepared for this from almost everyone from the Troy Racket Club. It seems to me, and the point I would like to make tonight is simply that the Troy Racket Club has created what I think is sort of a common thread. They've recreated a real club, a real family, a diverse family of like-minded people, and they have embodied in 40 years the most noble notions, I think, of what we want, I think, in the City of Troy as a club of this type. Something where it's a safe place for children, for families, for, where people and members and professionals can play and train, where they're treated with dignity and respect. And it's been a successful club for all. I remember years ago when Don Pierce first created the club, he said he wanted a club that was sort of like the Cheers kind of situation where everyone knew your name. And from all accounts, from everyone, on both sides, he has created that kind of a club. And it seems to me that before the City Council today is really two doors, two options of two different kinds of club. With door number one, which is the Troy Racket Club, we have a stalwart, a club that has had no drama, literally no complaints in 40 years. I think, I take that back. I think that 10 years ago, somebody had called because they didn't have court time at the front desk, and somebody referred them to Don, and they quickly resolved that. But literally, no serious complaints in 40 years, which is quite extraordinary. They terminated two employees or contract employees in 40 years. That's extraordinary, really, and one of them was with the opposition today, the other bidder. They have been uniformly cooperative with the city for 40 years. When Mr. Miller asked here a couple of years ago for extra parking for Troy Days, I remember Don saying, you know, he got out of the car even before he knew what the particulars were. He said, "Well, you'll find that I'm cooperative."
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I'll call on Philip Eagleson, Troy resident, wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Phil Eagleson. I've been a resident of Troy for the past 29 years. I've known Mr. DiVergilio of All Court Tennis for the past 38 years. We met through tennis 38 years ago. We've remained the best of friends since then. I know Mr. DiVergilio to be a man of great integrity, very trustworthy and loyal friend. He's also a very smart and outspoken businessman. He's had several business ventures that have been quite successful. One of them right now, I'm also an independent contractor in Wesson Indoor Tennis Club. In my, in my years of living in Troy, which, as I said, has been quite a while now, I haven't, I haven't really seen a lot of marketing or promotion for the tennis side. I would love to see a little bit more, and I do believe that Mr. DiVergilio and All Court Tennis could bring that to the, to the facility. Also, I've been teaching tennis in the metro Detroit area for the past 25 years, multiple different clubs, the last three years being at Wesson. In that, in that time at Wesson, I found it to be a great working environment. We don't really have any, any types of issues there. I haven't seen any turnover of employees of any type, whether it's a tennis pro, a desk staff, administrative staff. Everyone has remained, and that's because the work environment is great. I love working at the club. I love working in that environment there, and I do believe that it's a great environment that would also improve things in the Troy area. Not saying that they're not necessarily good, I just think it can bring more to it. One other thing I'd like to say is, many, many times, as I've said, I've been 25 years in different clubs, many times I've had issues with payment or issues with tax forms or that type of thing. I haven't had or found any of that type of thing at Wesson. All my forms are given to me on time. Anything that's owed to me payment-wise is given to me on time, and, and that's really a nice, a nice thing to go along with the comfortable environment, where all the pros are friendly with one another, and all the people that work in the club, and all of the members of the club are friendly with everyone surrounding them. It's just a very nice work environment, and I love working there. So, and I, and I do believe that All Court Tennis could do a wonderful, excuse me, a wonderful job with, with Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I'll call on Latrice Eagleson, Troy resident, wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening to you. My name is Latrice Eagleson. My husband and I built a home here almost 30 years ago, and we have been, we moved from Detroit to Troy and have been here just almost 30 years now. I've known Mr. DiVergilio since he was 11. I met him when he was a junior playing tennis. My son, who just spoke, was also a junior playing tennis, and they were in fact the same tennis age. So I've spent a lot of time with Brian on and off the court. I know that he loves entrepreneur work, and he loves tennis. And he's been successful at it, and he's now partner in a tennis club north of here. I listened to the hearing two weeks ago. I wasn't here, but I did pull it up and get it. So I'm not going to speak in sentences in terms of what the, most of the rest of what I have to say, but I want to tell you who I think Brian is, just in single words, descriptive. Adaptable, adventurous, ambitious, compassionate. Adaptable, adventurous, ambitious, compassionate, feisty, outspoken, frank, persistent, aggressive, competitive, direct, honest, and knowledgeable. That's my time with Brian. Finally, I believe that change isn't always easy to do and does not come easy to embrace. But if it's absent, there is no opportunity for greater success or failure. And the only way you figure it out is to do it. And like I said, I listened to the proceedings and comments at the prior meeting and was, in fact, really surprised that I didn't hear not one positive comment about Brian. I don't think anybody can be perfect. All of us have flaws. I've got mine. All of you have yours.
Thank you, Mrs. Eagleson. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you. Next, I'll call upon Jody Sokolitis, Troy resident, wishes to speak on H2.
Everybody always slaughters it. It's lichitis. It's okay.
Well, I was sort of...
That's all right. No worries. I'm coming in with a perspective that's not necessarily just the business aspect of tennis. I have lived in Troy my entire life. I grew up in Troy. I went to Troy High School, went away to college and came back, and now I live in Troy again. I have two young daughters and they both play tennis. One is more competitive than the other. I am coming from a parent's perspective and a learning perspective. I've known Brian since middle school. I know that he is competitive. He is an outspoken person. But he has a heart of gold and his philosophy is to build tennis and build citizens that can be an active part of our community. And I think moving into Troy and experiencing that here from his tennis perspective would really be a benefit to the community. We did play here at Troy Racquet Club for a while and we moved a little bit around depending on what my daughters needed at the time. But I feel that bringing that into the community is really going to be a benefit to everyone. And I hope that people can see that and see that it's a part of the community that we need to build and we need to grow. And again, change is hard, but I think that we're all ready to move forward into that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call upon Roger Jankowski, Troy resident, wishes to speak on H2.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Good evening.
I have multiple Troy connections. I'm a Troy homeowner, 16 years, business owner, 14 years. And I played at Troy Racquet Club before and after Brian. I appreciate the warm sentiment people describe about the club. I didn't feel that after Brian left. What he brought, though, when he came to that club, was something pretty extraordinary and I want to convey that to you. He has a sense of sort of esprit de corps. He brings people of all levels into tennis, children, adults. He does work on people who are ranked beginners and their games are transformed. He got people coming from Shelby and Farmington Hills. And suddenly, we had friends in these clinics that we didn't know we had. We were going to Morton's afterward, another Troy business. We were going to Kona Grill afterwards. They had regular spaces for us. We had a real kind of joie de vivre among the players. When he left, that all ended. And some of us there didn't feel that warmth. I now play, in spite of having two tax bills, I now play at the Birmingham Racquet Club. It's just a more welcoming environment there. And I'd like to come back and play in the city where I work and live. But I just don't feel that, that sort of sense of professionalism there. He's just extraordinary when it comes to instruction, skills, clinics, you know, the way to integrate people. The other thing I want to raise, though, as a business owner, is a little bit troubling to me. It has to do with the optics of the RFP. I'm in an RFP right now in my own company. And it's very unusual for a business who wins the RFP in a clear bid process to then not have it rewarded to them. At least, that's what I've found in my experience and I've been through a lot of them. What generally happens in those cases is someone else brings something extraordinary to something, they have an expertise or they do something different. And I don't think that's the case here. I think what's happening, it appears to me, that when you move a business from one person to another, but don't state that forthright in the RFP, that's an unusual optic. I would have felt more comfortable if knowing Mr. Schoen was going to be the leader of it and not have it, you know, take it over after the RFP was awarded. That just feels weird. And I think I'd ask the council to judge this on the merits of the business and not for sentimental reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Ty Keating, Troy resident, wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening. Ty Keating, I live in Troy. Been there for 27 years. My kids have all gone through the Troy High Schools, all the school systems, fabulous school systems. I've been in the tennis industry up until about 20 years ago. I played for Michigan State on a scholarship, played number one. I did work at the Birmingham Racquet Club for many years under Bill Saunders and Don Pierce. They ran a very nice program there at Birmingham Racquet Club. Then Don spun off and took over the Troy Racquet Club and they separated their businesses. Although he had a reciprocal between the two when I was there. I was the head pro there for several years. I hired Brian DiVergilio as one of my pros. I know a lot of the players that, a lot of the head pros. Phil Eagleson, who spoke here, he used to work under me as well. I hired him, very good pro. Brian DiVergilio was a fabulous pro. He has a knack for the sport. But he also has a business mind and I knew that very early when I first had him and hired him. I'm not here to slander Don Pierce and his group, but I am looking at the future of Troy. I have a daughter that got a full scholarship from tennis. And so I know a little bit about the sport. I will say that building a club from ground up in Pontiac with Brian and Chris was very impressive. I had seen other clubs that did not do very well during the last 20 years. But I will say, I was quite impressed. And although there were a lot of delays with Pontiac and the city and working things out, they stayed true and held true. And it's a thriving club today and I'm a part of that club. So I'm here to say that I would endorse Brian because he is the younger and he will be there, and Brian and Chris for that matter, will be there for the duration versus somebody getting a contract and then selling it off. I was a part of the Birmingham Racquet Club when I pitched for my own club, to pitch over the Birmingham Racquet Club 20-some years ago. And one of the reasons I'm here is because I heard they were slandering Brian and Chris. And I remember going through the same process myself. So I just want to make sure that whatever the slander was, they run a very good ship and I'm very impressed by it. Very reasonably priced, very good pros. All of them have a desire to succeed and I believe it would be a great asset for the Troy community to have Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Ken Brodzinski, Troy resident, wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Ken Brodzinski. I've been a homeowner in the city of Troy for the past 27 years. My wife Sue and I are proud parents of three Troy High graduates. I've got a considerable amount of history with Troy Racquet Club and tennis in Troy. I've been a member of TRC for 28 years. I set up their website in 2005. I've run a Thursday Night League since 1989. During that time, my group has contributed upwards of $195,000 in revenue to the club. My wife Sue and I have, my wife Sue has taken weekly lessons from Kurt Smith over the years. We've attended tennis mixers, hitting lessons, booked open court time, sent our kids through lessons there, and enjoyed many other fun activities at the Troy Bubble. I've served as the president of the Troy Tennis Club this summer, outdoor tennis for two years. And my wife Sue and I actually met at a Troy tennis mixer in 1987. I can't speak from personal experience about the principles of All Court Tennis, but I can certainly vouch for how TRC has been run for the past 28 years. I've known Don Pierce since 1989. He has played in my Thursday League and has always been willing to talk to us about how to make the club better. Don's passion about to make the Troy Club the best he can is to make the best he can for his members. There have been numerous renovations to the club. In the past few years, Don expanded and improved the locker rooms and the childcare area, allowing parents to bring their kids and have babysitting while playing in an afternoon league. Current manager Kathy Deltato has done a tremendous job organizing teams, leagues, holiday drills, etc., getting people to participate in this wonderful sport. Tom Schoen has been a full-time member of my Thursday League for the past 10 years. He's an upstanding small business owner, a good manager, a solid tennis player, and an overall great guy. You won't be disappointed with his relationship with the city, the club, or the community. I'm convinced that Kathy, Don, and Tom will continue to improve the facilities and the experience at Troy Racquet Club. The fact that Don and staff have been effectively running that club for 40 years should be given more weight than a competitive proposal with a few fancy charts and whatnot. Please don't abandon that impeccable business that has been TRC for all these years in favor of the new operators. I value integrity, stability, and character. The community of tennis players in Troy is tight-knit and we know a good thing when we see it. TRC is a good thing. Let's keep it that way. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Nancy Morrison, business owner, wishes to speak on H1 and I4. Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor Slater and council members. I'm Nancy Morrison, the executive director of the Troy Community Coalition for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse. I wanted to make you aware that I did talk with the owners of the Hookah Lounge and also their attorney. I provided them with a tobacco educational packet, which was similar to the packet, the alcohol packet, that I had emailed you during the liquor violation hearings. So I made them aware that the coalition is here and we are happy to help them in any way we possibly can. And then in regards to the Medical Marijuana Caregiver Grow operations, you know, I'm always fighting for our youth. I'm always fighting to protect our children. And we know that marijuana, of course, can affect a young brain. We also know that it decreases academic performance, marijuana, that is. And we also know, teens tell us that if they have a friend with a medical marijuana card, that they report that it's very easy to obtain marijuana because they are using their friend's medical marijuana. We know that every day, 7,000 people will try marijuana for the first time. I'd like to reduce those numbers and keep our children safe. So on behalf of the Troy Community Coalition, I ask that you opt out. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. Next, I'll call on James Savage, Troy resident, wishes to speak on I5. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. I5 is regarding the selection of a new city manager. And I've made a few notes in the over 40 years that I've lived in Troy and the over 20 years that I've attended council meetings. I have a little insight as far as city managers are concerned. And it would seem that there's an occupational hazard connected to city managers. It's called abuse of power. Anything I have, all these notes I have, are all on record and can be verified. We'll hide this so deep in the weeds, the mayor and council will never find it. Those are the words of John Zurlag, city manager in Florida. I believe it was Fox News that recorded it. I'll repeat it. We'll hide this so deep in the weeds that the mayor and city council will never find it. There's more details, but I only have three minutes. The same John Zurlag, city manager in Troy, tried a resolution to condemn a residence unlivorn, hidden in the consent agenda. In 1997, city manager James Bacon put a plan to put a road through a property that was not for sale against the wishes of the owner and the residents. The Civic Center Park Task Force, appointed by city council, disbanded by manager Zurlag without council approval. In 2016, an inquiry, an indictment against manager Kishnik regarding abuse of power. Council later extended his contract and gave him a raise. The McClure Apartments, the Amber Apartments on Town Center Drive, the storage units on Rochester Road, the huge billboards on Rochester Road, were all these unpopular projects hidden in the weeds? The McClure Apartments rezoning resulted in the biggest protest in Troy's history.
Mr. Savage, thank you. That's your thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was over 1,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call on Charles Murphy, business owner, wishes to speak on I4.
Good evening, council members. I'm actually an attorney for landlords that lease suites to five caregivers. I'm also a, I should be playing tennis at Troy Racquet Club right now because I've been a member there since 1990. So I'm missing out on my time. But just a couple of key points. One, the proposed ordinance actually includes zoning provisions and should not be part of a standalone police power ordinance because Section 9 attempts to regulate the use of land according to zoning districts. And in this case, there was no notice to the affected caregivers and landlords that there would be effectively an amended zoning ordinance. So based on that lack of notice, we're asking the council to table this proposal until there's proper notice under the Zoning Enabling Act, which requires notice in public hearing, as you're aware. These caregiver operations of our lessees are allowed under the Medical Marijuana Act. Each of the suites have certificates of occupancy, which were issued under the prior Troy ordinances. And they should be grandfathered in under the Zoning Enabling Act if the ordinance was properly presented as a police power ordinance and a zoning ordinance. Under the Medical Marijuana Act and case law, there's a preemption issue where if the ordinance regulates the activities in a way that conflicts with the 2008 Act, it's preempted and prohibited. A registered caregiver and a registered patient is entitled to engage in the medical use of marijuana without penalty or restrictions such as the imposition of a business license. The only locations not permitted under the Act for the use, medical use of marijuana are school buses, schools, and correctional facilities. So Troy, the city of Troy and any municipality lacks the authority to restrict the authorized use of medical marijuana under the 2008 Act. The other issue is that these are prior existing... The other issue is that these are prior existing uses where there's been a certificate of occupancy already issued, and they should be grandfathered in without additional restrictions being imposed upon the caregivers and the lessors of...
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call on Toby Buckner, Troy resident wishes to speak on H2.
Good evening, everyone. I've lived in Troy for about 22 years, met my wife on a tennis court 27 years ago. I'm a business owner in Troy as well. You guys have the hard decision to make to figure out two pretty good candidates. As what's similar with the potential renovation of this space, you're going to have some people against it and some people in favor of it. Your job is to make the right decision. We trust you in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Collins, Troy resident wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come here and talk. I'm a resident of Troy for 29 years, and I'm an avid tennis player. I play on many leagues and I travel around, and I do play in other cities, states, and actually in the country, so I've had a chance to see a lot of different tennis clubs in my travels. And in the area, I've been a member of six different clubs in southeastern Michigan. From my experience, I have also been a member at Troy Racquet Club, and more recently, I moved to Wesson Indoor a few years back. And I can honestly tell you that Western Indoor is by far, I think, a better club. It's better from a facility perspective, which is kind of obvious because it's a newer facility, but the services they offer, and also, I think, about how it's run and the kind of environment that they create. There's many things I think that they do very well, and some of the examples I think came out in the RFP and the reason why they were chosen. Things like the automated scheduling for court fees and reminders and things that make, I think, a lot easier on members. I think they've taken great care of tennis parents who really have comfortable ways to view their kids that they bring for lessons and while providing areas for them to work. And I think also what the biggest thing I've seen there, though, is not any one thing, but it's been a series of things, and I think it's really a continuous incremental mindset of continuous improvement. And up until just even this year, I've seen changes in the club that they have made. And I, so I think they do service, they do target keeping the customer in mind, and I think they've built a great tennis community in Pontiac where there really was no tennis community to start with. And what I've seen with, so don't get me wrong, I think, you know, the employees at Troy Racquet Club, because I was a member there, are polite and kind, and they are good service to their members as well. Though I don't see the really the incremental improvements that I've seen over at Wesson, over at Troy Racquet Club. They certainly ask for ideas and stuff, and we've talked about some of them, but certainly I haven't seen some of the things that I think would help bring that club along. And I think it's, the idea of having bids for these kinds of things, as you all know, is very important, and I think the voters ask for that, for these bids to be bid out. And I think it's important that we get the very best for the Troy residents and we end up with the best club. And also to make sure that existing contract holders, you know, don't end up, you know, becoming complacent. So I put it in your hands to make sure that you decide the best for the city of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Daniel Tanguay, Troy resident wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members, council. My name is Dan Tanguay. I've been a Troy resident since 1995. I've been playing tennis since I was eight years old. I play on multiple USTA League teams, so I do get to see a lot of tennis facilities all around Metro Detroit. Unfortunately, I would rank the Troy Racquet Club as one of the worst. In spite of the fact that the Troy Racquet Club is the closest to my house, I've never joined there due to the state of the facilities and the lack of programming for advanced players. I've played a few league matches there. The indoor building is dark and cramped. In the summertime, I found the facility even worse. There's a tricky drop-off at the back of some of the courts, and the nighttime lighting is so deficient that it creates dangerous playing conditions. From my perspective, it feels like neither the current management nor the city of Troy has spent much money to maintain the club facilities, much less provide any improvements. I've known Brian DiVirgilio and Chris Dobson for many years, starting when they were working at the BOH Indoor Tennis Club. Chris and Brian are driven individuals. If they weren't, Wesson Indoor would simply not exist. Building a thriving tennis club in the middle of Pontiac is a testament to their dedication. Wesson Indoor's teaching staff and training programs are among the best in the area. City council has a duty to make sure that due diligence is properly conducted. It should also ensure that the city gets the best deal possible for its residents. It is my understanding that the all-court tennis proposal includes capital investments into the facility, as well as a larger revenue share to the city. I also understand that the bank of five courts would be kept indoors year-round, which would address the court and lighting issues that I've highlighted earlier. In my opinion, the all-court tennis proposal brings in a number of healthy changes, which will revitalize the Troy Racquet Club and benefit both the tennis community and the city of Troy as a whole. Some people mentioned a need for continuity. Given the current state of the facility, is that really the right path to follow here? I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Rebecca Tanguay, Troy resident wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Rebecca Tanguay. I've been a Troy resident for my entire adult life. I've been playing tennis for my entire life, beginning at age five at Wimbledon in St. Clair Shores. This is where my parents and I first met Brian DiVirgilio. He was a successful junior tennis player, later an excellent pro at the same club, going on to build successful programs at many clubs, including Troy. I didn't realize that Troy had never put the management of Troy Racquet Club out for bid in over 40 years, but I could have guessed. The dilapidated club is one I would never join, even though it's closest to my house. I do have experience playing there, as our tennis teams are put in the same league as Troy quite often. It's impossible to view the on-court activities on most of the courts. The lighting is completely inadequate, and the dome is leaking water directly on the playing surface. It's in desperate need of a facelift to improve the club up to current standards. By contrast, Wesson Indoor Tennis Club is the nicest club in southeastern Michigan. I was a member on day one. It has multiple playing surfaces, the court viewing is second to none, the locker rooms are clean and modern, and the website booking process is easy and simple. The pros are known as the best. The staff has been consistent, which tells you something about how they are treated by management. I was a board member at Bloomfield Open Hunt Indoor Tennis Club when we hired Brian DiVirgilio. He and John Kennedy were looking to leave Troy. They both were very professional, but we only had five courts available, and they had to be shared with members. It was not enough hours for both, and John chose to stay at Troy while Brian came to BOH ITC. During his tenure there, he grew the program from two days a week to seven days a week. We asked him to take over the weekday program when the principal could no longer do it. We asked him to take over the tennis director job when the person doing that could no longer serve. In total, after four years, we made more money and had more satisfied tennis customers with Brian than we could have ever predicted. When the planned operational agreement was over with BOH, most of the members followed Brian to Wesson when it opened the following season. It is with dismay that I watched the replay of the Troy City Council and the way current management at Troy Racquet Club was able to gather together in advance and launch a direct attack on Brian's character and good name. I hope you see the attacks as nothing more than what they are, sour grapes. This change in tennis management company is good for tennis players, Troy residents, and the city of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Don Pierce, business owner wishes to speak on H2.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
It's nice to come up here in person after hearing my name this many times. I appreciate a lot of the comments that were made. Some of the comments that were made, I hope are not true, as I think they are not. I don't consider our club dilapidated at all. It's a fine brick building. It's been kept up. The courts have been kept up. We're planning to resurface courts this year, even though most people looking at them would say they don't need to be resurfaced. I happen to think, because I play a lot of tennis, that if you don't have a good background, good lighting, and good surface, you're missing one of the key elements. But the fact is, with this bid process that has just been completed, there's an opportunity now to do the catch-up expenses, knowing whose club it will be. It'll be one of two of us, it turns out. I also listened to the age card being played tonight, so I have to take an opportunity to comment on what I tried to put together when we built the Troy Racquet Club in the first place. It has been 40 years. We started out with little kids 10 years old running to the mailboxes up and down the street. Probably shouldn't have done that, but we put our flyers out when we had our first But what I saw was the opportunity, I had built the Birmingham Racquet Club, which is a similar model as this. Rather than having eight courts at Birmingham, we built six, two bubbles, one was four, one was two. But more important to me was the idea that we could put together a group of people that would turn out to be a club. That was the object and that is a goal I think that we've achieved. For me, a club is an opportunity for many people, in this case, tennis, to do the same thing, enjoy it, get the best experience they can from it, and of course, you can advance on up the ladder and play as much as you want. And believe me, you'd probably surprise how many players you see playing really competitive tennis, and I think it's pretty much legendary now. We have about 35 teams playing in the southeastern Michigan tennis leagues. We're starting up the summer tennis again this summer, which we will be running. So with the tennis facilities now turning in and having turned into a club, we've got goal number one. Goal number two for any club starting out is to get a good group of tennis pros. We've had that for a long, long time. We've had hundreds and thousands of kids.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Jonathan Snow, Troy resident wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to encourage the council to keep the current management at the tennis facility. My son is 13 years old. He's been taking lessons there for about the last seven years. He's here today at his first city council meeting. I'm ashamed to say, in 29 years, this is also my first one. But they've done an excellent job. He's formed personal relationships with some of the coaches and some of the management. Their passion really shows through, and I just, I hope they will continue to manage that facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Randall Hoag, Troy resident wishes to speak on H2. Did I get that, did I get that right?
Pardon?
Did I get your last name correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I've been a resident in Troy for 59 years and sought growth, sought to get better and better, and it's a great city, best in the country as far as I'm concerned. I've been a part-time tennis pro for over 30 years. I worked in Troy with John Kennedy, and we had some good programs, adult, junior programs, and we had Parks and Rec classes going, and we were doing really well. The reason I'm here tonight basically is to give you my opinion on how the club ran before, the Troy Racquet Club ran before, during, and after Brian DiVirgilio started and came. Before Brian got there, John Kennedy had a good system in place and ran things pretty good. And then Brian came in and took charge of the tennis at TRC, and there was an immediate difference in all the aspects of the club. Everything became organized down to the finest details. Whether it was the scheduling, advertising, or even the type of sizes or classes, Brian had them working at full efficiency. Because of Brian's knowledge of tennis and his business savvy, he eliminated wasted court time and utilized all the courts, so there was more classes and less confusion. During this time, Brian had all the USTA teams running at full capacity with available courts for home matches. The tennis, the programs, and the teams were running better and smoother than ever before. Then, in my opinion, that after the owner saw how much easier, smoother, and how much more revenue this was generating, Brian was forced out. It was immediate apparent in the next session, after Brian was gone, that the system he had in place was breaking down. There was confusion from pro to pro, which classes they were to work with, which courts they were going to work on. It also seemed that there was no continuity between the office manager and the two pros that were taking over for Brian. There were no courts to reserve a court. There were usually no courts to play in the evenings and the weekends. And to reserve a court for private lessons, you had to hope to either get somebody at the phone at the desk, or you had to go up to the club in person to see if there was any court available, which is kind of outdated. Many times, it depended on the mood of the office manager. If you were in her good graces, you would get a court. If not, you would not. I joined up with Brian as he was opening up the Wesson Indoor Tennis Club. It is a very impressive club. The layout of the courts and the clubhouse is well thought out, the computerized booking system, second to none. Brian was brought in some of the finest and most qualified pros in the area, also some of the best players in the area. And if Brian was given a shot at the Troy Racquet Club, it would be a solid club. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Nick Valendez, Troy business owner wishes to speak on I4. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicholas Galendez. I'm here as an attorney from the Cannabis Legal Group. We're representing property owners in the city who also lease space to register primary caregivers to allow them to exercise their rights under the 2008 Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. After looking at the ordinance, I would also urge this council to table adopting the ordinance until further consideration can be made. There are several glaring issues that I think are worth consideration. There are several ways to go about doing this. I know the city council has not decided to opt in to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. And the difference between that law and the 2008 Medical Marijuana Act is that it does give the city, township, or village more power to make that decision. But in terms of caregiver-patient protected conduct, I think there are some things that run afoul, and there are definitely some things that are, things that are overstepping and overreaching that I believe if the city were to adopt this ordinance. What it said in the packet that I reviewed is that the ordinance is intended to give effect to the intent of the MMMA as approved by the people of the state of Michigan, which goes down to the plain language of the state law. It was also designed to recognize the fundamental intent of the state law and regulate it in a manner that does not conflict with the state law. And as I mentioned, I think it really overreaches in several areas and somewhat exposes the city to a lot of litigation, not only from the caregivers and patients who are allowed to engage in that conduct, but also from the property owners who are allowed to lease this space to those caregivers who are wanting to engage in this activity. Just a minor clarification as far as what I saw in the packet. The new state law, the Facilities Licensing Act, does not require caregivers to choose between what they can do under the 2008 Medical Marijuana Act and the Facilities Licensing Act. It was intended to kind of run in tandem to give patients who have debilitating conditions two different avenues, whether from a licensed provisioning center or from their own caregiver who they're connected to, to get medicine. A few things in the ordinance that I noticed, you know, it conditions a caregiver's ability to cultivate on obtaining a permit from the city. That kind of runs afoul of the MMMA. It allows up to 72 plants under state law in an enclosed lock facility, but what I saw this city wanting to do is require caregivers to partition that off even more, which I believe that is prohibiting what state law allows, and it could expose the city to potential litigation. Also, a kind of, what I saw as a most very, very important glaring issue is that it restricts the number of patients who are allowed to grow within their residence. State law, if anything, allows that to occur, and I think if it was more than one patient wants to grow, they need a, basically, a city operating license to do that, and that's definitely overreaching. So I think there's a lot to consider, and I would urge the city council to table this until further consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak on F1, public comment for items on the agenda from Troy businesses and residents. I noticed that there's quite a few that have signed up for public comment under Q1, and that's for items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. And... And it looks like everyone wants to speak on each two, so I'm going to move to amend the rules and allow Q1 to be moved up and allow the, those to speak at this time. Or? It's moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Baker that we amend the rules and move Q1, which is public comment for items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, in order to speak on these issues, H1 and I4. Any discussion? Vote, Mr. Dixon?
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. First, I'll call on Nicole Asher, who wishes to speak on H2.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Asher. I'm a pro at Wesson Indoor Tennis Club. I have quite an extensive background in this industry, as both a top nationally-ranked player and now as a teaching pro. For the last 30 years, I've been teaching tennis in southeastern Michigan and in New York City. Here's a quick rundown of the clubs I've taught at. Franklin, Square Lake Sports Club, Forest Lake Country Club, Knollwood Country Club, in New York, New York Health and Racquet Club on Wall Street, East River Racquet Club, and the Central Park Tennis Academy. I can honestly say that I have never worked at a better club than Wesson, and I've never worked for two better people than Chris Dobson and Brian DiVirgilio. I can offer the rare female perspective in a male-dominated industry, and Chris and Brian have given me all the respect and every opportunity to be as successful as I can possibly be. On a personal note, I've known Brian DiVirgilio for over 30 years. He's my friend, he's been my coworker, and now I work for him. And in those 30 years, he has never been anything but kind, respectful, and wonderful to me. Five years ago, I left a really good job at the Sports Club of West Bloomfield, where I'd been teaching at for nine years. I would have never left a situation like that and gone to work at a starter club in the middle of Pontiac if I didn't have the utmost respect and trust in both of the owners. And listening tonight, I think that the members of Troy seems afraid that Chris and Brian are going to take away what they love about their club, which is the homey, cozy, warm feeling. I think Tom mentioned cheers. That is exactly what I love best about Wesson. You feel wonderful when you walk in. They're friendly to everybody, and that comes from the top. All my students that came over from Sports Club immediately were like, "I love it here. I feel so comfortable here." You don't have to be a great player. You can be terrible. You can be beginner. Everyone is welcome. It's the nicest, warmest, best club I've ever worked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Mindy Schwartz, wishes to speak on H2.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council persons. I'm Mindy Schwartz. I actually live in Pleasant Ridge, where we have no area tennis court, so I went looking. So you know I am now a current member of Wesson. I've played very often at Troy Racket Club. A lot of my partners and opponents are sitting behind me here on either side of the aisle. I've had a great time playing at Troy, but when I went looking for a top-level program, I found it with Brian DiVirgilio and Chris Dobson. And I found it while I was the vice president of Bloomfield Open Hunt Tennis Club, when we brought them in to run the programming there. They immediately turned that program around, they added what needed to be done, and they still maintained what the members there loved about the program. They do not come in and throw out everything and say, "We knew better about everything." That is not their style. We've had experience with this. We have a membership that is very, at Bloomfield Open Hunt, a membership that was very committed to their club and how it had been run for many, many years. They embraced Brian and Chris. Brian and Chris embraced them, and the programming all across the board improved. I'm also, I also was recently selected by USTA Midwest to serve on their junior competition committee. It was a huge honor for me, and this is the committee that really works and determines how tournaments are done in the Midwest, how juniors are ranked in the Midwest, how they come and move up in all of the, excuse me, ranking and rating systems. And I can tell you that what Brian and Chris can bring to this program is a top-level training system that they use, that impacts these kids in ways you have no idea. There was a lot of discussion, I recently went to the convention in Indianapolis, of the USTA Midwest, and there was a lot of discussion about the need for excellent training for our kids. It is a life skill, it is a sports skill, it is a college skill, it serves them their entire life. That they will bring this high level of training to Troy does not mean that what is so good about Troy already will be ruined. Finally, I'd like to tell you, I walked into Wesson one day when it first opened and ran into Don Pierce there, who had stopped by to see what Brian and Chris had created. And I have to tell you, Don spent 10 minutes telling me how impressed he was with what they had done and what a fan he was of Brian DiVirgilio. It was just an honest conversation standing in the lobby of a tennis club. I don't believe even, I know they both want the bid, I get it, but I don't believe that there is a lack of respect between these two people, regardless of all of the other things you have heard tonight or two weeks ago. Even Don Pierce knows that Brian and Chris can bring, can create and build very high-level, top-notch tennis programs. They've done it before. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Sandy Baldick, who wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Baldick. I'm a resident of Rochester. I am an educator in Rochester, and I'm also a member of the Wesson Tennis Club. And I can't speak for Troy, but I can speak for Wesson and my experience there. I have moved nine times in my life. I've lived in different states, different countries. I've been in different clubs, and I have never been in a club that is as well-managed and is as professional as the Wesson Tennis Club. I saw these two young men, Brian and Chris, when they were beginning to build this facility. If you could have seen that, you wouldn't have believed what there is now today. I mean, we're talking a field with cars buried, I mean, you know, in the dirt. They took something from that in the city of Pontiac and made it one of the premier tennis facilities. I've taken lessons from Brian, from Chris, from Nicole, and I'm not a high-level tennis player. I'm just someone who enjoys the game, and boy, do I enjoy the game over there. I didn't know anybody when I went, and I was made to feel very, very welcome, and they just did a great job. It's fun. The kids have fun, everyone has fun, and I hope you give them an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Armin Malino, who wishes to speak on H2. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. I've been in the tennis industry in southeastern Michigan for about 35 years. I've worked at numerous clubs, and I've known Brian DiVirgilio and Chris Dobson for over 25 years. I've known them as players, I've known them as colleagues, and now I work at Wesson Indoor Tennis. I'm happy to say that the community that is now apparent at TRC is also there at Wesson Indoor. Their mission would be, if they were to gain this bid, to only enhance what's happened at TRC, to improve the community, to improve the facilities, to keep what's good at TRC, and hopefully make it better. I've never had a conflict with anything at Wesson Indoor. I think Chris and Brian have done a fantastic job to create a facility in Pontiac where no one thought it could be done, and the members there are very happy. The junior program is thriving. We have an outstanding staff, and I really do believe they deserve the opportunity to bring those positives to TRC as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Dan McKenzie, who wishes to speak on H2.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I've been in the industry for 33 years, teaching. I've been playing since I was four, so I've been playing a long time. I've been to many clubs. I've taught all over the country, Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, I've been Kansas City, Racket Club, oh God, Paducah, Kentucky, in the middle of nowhere. And all these clubs, some were owned by members, others were owned by corporations. Some were private, some were non-private. What I've noticed at Wesson, from when I walked in, and it's hard to make a bubble great, they found a way. They, they went first rate instead of, can we cut corners? Can we do things mediocre? They didn't do that. They made sure that when you walked in, you were like, "Wow." And you do get that feeling. And when they went to the staff, they went out and they found top-notch pros. Almost everyone played Division One tennis. All of them have college degrees, some master's degrees. You're dealing with a very intelligent athletic group of individuals that they can use for information. Mine is in professional tennis management. That's what I went to school for. So when I see many different management styles, this one's a good one. You have a lot of independent contractors that come together, and we work as a unit, and we produce a lot of good players, and we teach from the youngest, two- or three-year-old, to people in their 80s and beyond. And it's a family. And I'm pretty sure we'll bring the same type of feeling to Troy Racket Club, and what we'll do is utilize what they have that's great and hopefully take care of any problems that we see. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mark Simcina wishes to speak on H2.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thanks for letting me speak. So, just a short statement. So my name is Mark Simcina. I've been a certified tennis pro for 35 years. I've worked at pretty much every neighborhood club in southeastern Michigan, and none of which was at the Troy Racket Club. And I was there before and during Brian DiVirgilio's involvement. Now, when he started, it was clear to me that Brian had superior business skills than I had seen previously at Troy. He was really efficient at organizing new classes, as well as using new and innovative methods to increase club income. And really, that's what Brian's about, is getting more people involved and increasing income, which will obviously can only help the Troy community. He always communicated in a direct and professional manner, and most importantly, met his payroll promptly and fully each week. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Jared Kokubo, who wishes to speak on H2.
Is it permissible for me to?
If you would give it to the clerk, please.
This is for the...
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for your time. He's passing around, basically, a layout of what I'm going to speak about. Who I am is, I'm a former teacher at Troy for about 10 years. I taught in several other clubs around the area. My primary career, though, was business consulting, IT systems, analyst and design. I was also a permanent court time member at Troy Racket Club for many years. Enjoyed that. I don't really have any social or professional affiliation with either Brian or Tom. I know them, but I don't have any interest financially or as a member of the club. I currently reside in Dallas, retired, living the life, playing golf and tennis down there. So that's kind of who I am. What I'm hoping to do is just put some context around what I thought was alarming comments that I had heard about from the first meeting, although after this meeting, I almost feel like maybe I didn't even need to appear. But here goes. On the second page, I just laid out from a management perspective style what I thought were the problems were coming from, rather than from one individual. A typical organization has a director of tennis, a head tennis professional, and teaching professionals, single chain of command, pretty simple. At Troy, since I was there, they had three head professionals, non-employees, independent contractors, and they were all their own business profit center, pretty much competing against each other. So as a natural consequence of this, regardless of personalities, you're going to have a lot of conflicts that arise from having three separate businesses in one small facility. I witnessed X number of problems that arose from turf wars and things that would happen between pros. They're fighting for their income. It's understandable from my perspective, but the organization of the way you have three people competing in the same spot, that causes a lot of problems. There were also a few confusing things with the money flows. I'm not even going to read it. When you look at it, you'd fall asleep when I tried to read it. It's very confusing. I myself ran into some issues as far as getting paid. Money was flowing in every direction. It was difficult to decide who was going to get what. Disputes did arise from this. Nothing's a perfect place, but it could have been organized a lot better. 1099 reporting was non-existent for most of my time there. I did receive one or two 1099s. Neither one of them were sufficient to do IRS reporting, so that's a little bit of a concern. My basic summary is that most of the problems came from organization, not so much from individuals, but individuals put into a position where it's very difficult for them to conduct their business without conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Jennifer Smith, who wishes to speak on H2.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I sent all of you an email. I brought it here tonight. I was going to read it, but I will refer to it. Other things came up, and I'd like to say other things in addition to this. My daughter, who is here tonight, has been playing tennis since she was five. She is 12 now. We started lessons at Loveall Tennis, Beverly Hills Racket Club, Birmingham Racket Club, and Lifetime Fitness in Rochester Hills. All of those places are very beautiful clubs, but when we landed at TRC, at Troy Racket Club, we felt something that we had never felt before, which was a face, a name, and an actual desire to teach my child tennis. What you guys are fighting about seems to be about marble countertops in bathrooms or, or, you know, certain lounging areas. I'm talking about tennis instructors, instructors that are there for you to answer questions, to look at their rackets and say, "Maybe they should be re-strung." This is what I got at TRC. I did not get this at these expensive clubs that I was a member of. So when I said, "Well, maybe I'm missing something. I'll go to Wesson, you know, club and see what it's about." She had the day off from school because in Royal Oak, we live in Royal Oak, the power was out. I said, "Audrey, let's go check this out." There was no one there. There was one pro on the tennis court teaching someone. He was unable to show me around. The girl at the desk didn't even know what a USTA team was about. I had to show myself around the courts, around the locker rooms, and I, and I couldn't get a definitive answer on how much a junior membership was. I left. I said, "Wow, this is what they want to bring to Troy." What I want to stress to you is that the reason why I have been coming for three years, she plays seven days a week with Troy, because she loves every instructor. Kurt Smith is absolutely wonderful. He is high-spirited, he's gifted, and he stands behind every kid. He knows their names. He directs what class they should be in. You cannot buy that, and I don't care what kind of bubble you put up or lighting or anything else. If that's what it's about, I'll go somewhere else, and I'll go get my marble countertops somewhere else. I will not come back to Troy if that's what you guys value. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Mike Jacobson, wishes to speak on H2.
I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. So should we wait or get a longer period of time?
Are we going to let the petitioner speak when the item comes up, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I'll call on Jeffrey Schroder, who wishes to speak on I4. Next, I'll call on Jeffrey Schroeder, who wishes to speak on I4. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Jeff Schroeder, I was here in December at a special meeting of the city council to talk about the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. And at that time, you may recall, I talked to the council, and I said, you know, the legislature did something here that they never do, and that is that they gave the city more power in the ordinance instead of taking it away, because that's usually what Lansing does. They pass an ordinance, it affects local communities, you have less power. In the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, I understand it, in the meantime, the city has decided to opt out of that, and that's fine, but with this ordinance that's on the agenda tonight, with respect to the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act and requiring a license, this particular ordinance, which was adopted by the voters, and 61% of Troy voters voted for that, would preempt a number of things that are in this ordinance, including a licensing scheme. For example, the ordinance will require a city license with license requirements that contradict that which is in the act for primary caregivers. So, you see the difference between the two. In the new state law, you can adopt a very strict ordinance, you can adopt a licensing scheme, you can make stricter requirements than the state has for a license, and you can revoke that license when they violate your ordinance. Here, a number of communities in the courts have found their ordinances to be found preempted by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. And the licensing scheme is just one example of where I fear this ordinance runs afoul of the state law. Again, I represent, right now, landlords and primary caregivers in the city, many of them who are also residents. And the other issue, for example, Section 4G, applying the home occupation ordinance to primary caregivers, this has already held preempted this January by the Michigan Court of Appeals in a case involving the Charter Township of York. They did the exact same thing, and the Michigan Court of Appeals said, this is preempted by the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. We heard earlier that these operators now in the city have both a building permit and a certificate of occupancy. If you look at the building permit, it actually says "Medical Marijuana Facility" on the building permit, and a valid C of O. They have vested land use rights. The ordinance wants to strip them of their vested land use rights by declaring it, can't have a non-conforming use status. And the final thing, and I heard this earlier from Attorney Murphy, who was here, this, there are zoning ordinance provisions in this, it's a de facto zoning ordinance. You have locational requirements, you have distance requirements. This did not follow the Zoning Enabling Act, there was no notice given to my clients, they just found out about this on Friday. So, I think that if the city council decides to disable this, my clients would be willing to meet with the city to see if we can meet in the middle and do something that works. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, those that have signed up to speak on Q1, public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. We will move to G, which is city council or administration's opportunity to respond to public comment. Councilman Henderson.
Just, I want to clarify one thing for Nancy Morrison. We did opt out, just so that we're very clear. This is to catch up to something, we put a moratorium on medical marijuana grow operations about a little over a year ago, I think. This is to clean that section up, so.
Councilman Hamilton?
I would just like to ask City Attorney Bloom, could you respond to the three comments on I4 on the medical marijuana?
Mayor, I'm happy to do that. We do have a presentation, and Assistant City Attorney Alan Motzni is here, and we're happy to address all of the issues that have been raised so far.
Sure.
Yeah. I would just ask council, each of these items that were spoken at the meeting tonight are going to be up here shortly, and we can certainly talk about them and address them at that time. Not to discourage comment, but we will be bringing each of these items up shortly. Any other discussion?
Next, we will move to postponed items. We have two postponed items this evening. As soon as I get my computer back, I'll get to the first one. First one is the Tarbush Hookah Lounge License Suspension Hearing. I know City Attorney Bloom indicated that Alan Motzni is here. City Attorney Bloom, did you wish to introduce this again?
Yes, I will, just to explain what, and Assistant City Attorney Alan Motzni is here, and he was the one who did this presentation to council at the last meeting. Council had asked for this matter to be postponed so that it would allow for the license holder to be present. I know that the license holder is present, as well as their attorney, Mr. Mitchell, is here. I would just also indicate that the proposed resolution does not, in the agenda packet, does not call for a revocation, but instead would just impose a suspension, but allow that licensee to be reinstated. And should council be satisfied that there are sufficient protections and that there will be compliance with the law, then council may wish to pass that resolution instead. Your other option, of course, is to revoke it.
That was a public hearing that was opened and closed and returned to the table, so that's the position that we're at tonight, correct?
It was, and there was an admission that there were violations of the city's ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mitchell.
I'm here today, and my client is with me. Ms. Hamami, would you please approach? We're here as a result of the holdover from the last proceeding. At that time, I did accept responsibility on behalf of the Tarbush Hookah Lounge for those violations. We did have this alternative resolution drafted, or rather, Ms. Bloom did. What we're asking is that the council adopt this resolution. I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to review that, but it's very clear that any further, even single violation, civil infraction, misdemeanor, doesn't matter. This resolution contains a waiver of a due process hearing, which means that the city can come in and revoke the license at any instance. I brought my client here at the council's request. Now, what I would ask, if the council is going to be posing some questions to my client, that the scope of those questions be confined, you know, to the business and moving forward. I only say that because there are criminal charges pending against her. And I certainly wouldn't hope or expect that the council would punish my client for exercising her constitutional privileges.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
But I do present her.
Thank you. And I think council appreciates that you did bring the owner forward. Makes it easier to speak to the owner than through an attorney. Any questions further from council to Mr. Mitchell or the owner? City Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, I just wanted to make one clarification. Mr. Mitchell is correct in that it is a waiver of the due process, but we did limit that to this year only. So, I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that it is for this year only in this proposed resolution.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I apologize for interrupting, one item that I did want to bring up is, there is a succession plan in place for this business. My client has discussed selling the business with Mr. Sekir Panchabia. He is here this evening, and he's more than happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, he was approved as a manager of the Tarbush, which he intends on essentially taking over and eventually acquiring an ownership stake. But he is here, and he would be happy to answer any questions as well for the council.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Actually, I have a question for Ms. Bloom. Ms. Bloom, is it okay for us to ask if the new owner plans on employing this manager that was denied management status?
I think that that is an appropriate question to ask, and again, I think it's, you know, it's a little, she does have some rights as far as the past conduct, but already there's been an admission, so there's no need to do that. But certainly, I think it's appropriate to ask if he would be on the premises. I would also indicate that the resolution calls for him to be banned from the property, including the parking lot. So, that is in the resolution.
Okay. So, that's my question, then.
Yes, he, just like it says in the alternate resolution, if he's there, if he's found even on the parking lot, see you later. You guys can come in and take that license away.
Even with the new owner going forward?
Absolutely.
Councilman Henderson?
I was one of the council members that requested that you come in front of us. We do this frequently with liquor violations as well, but I think it's important for us to look eyeball to eyeball so that you understand kind of where we're at with the problems that happened at Tarbush. And one of the, we tightened up the ordinance in the city of Troy with regard to hookah lounges because there were a lot of problems when they first came to town, and we needed to clamp down and control those problems. There were drive-by shootings, people got clubbed in parking lots, there was trash strewn all over the place in a couple of these, and we just have a zero tolerance policy for that. And we want to make sure that you clearly understand that going forward, so.
Any further comments from council? There was a resolution on the table, correct, as printed?
The resolution that is in the agenda packet would be to acknowledge that the violations did occur, and to suspend, and also to impose some additional...
I'm just trying to recall from two weeks ago, did we move the resolution as printed on, for discussion?
No, you postponed it.
We just postponed it, and we did not move it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the attorney or current owner or future owner? I think, Mayor Proton, Mayor Hime.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Hamami, when did you learn of the first violation? And what actions did you take? I think that was the question that I had asked at the last meeting, and I'd like to hear from you directly, what you, when you learned it, what you did to take action, and...
Well, respectfully, council member, there was no other action they could take, and the business was shut down immediately. And what they did was, they reached out to me to handle this so we could address it, requested the hearing. As I mentioned at the last time, we accepted responsibility on behalf of the hookah lounge. What is in place going forward is, we have a new manager that's already been approved by the city.
There are two violations, or two dates where there are violations, one on March 15th and one on March 18th. So, that's...
Yeah, right.
Which, so the question I'm asking is, when did you learn of the violations? Was it on 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th? Was it after that, or until the suspension notice actually came through?
You don't call the exact date, don't guess and answer.
I'm not sure.
You're not sure exactly when?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Is it sometime between...
Between the...
15th, 22nd?
I want to echo Councilmember Henderson's comments about zero tolerance. We take these violations very seriously. Just a few weeks ago, we had liquor violation hearings, and I see this as being very similar in terms of importance and important to our community. So, any violation, we're looking for swift and immediate action. I appreciate that you were looking for a new manager sometime soon after you were notified of the violation, but I'm wondering why that manager wasn't fired immediately. And, that's my concern. I understand there's a succession plan, but we're looking for immediate action, and I didn't see it there. So, I don't know if you can comment on that a little further.
Do you understand the question?
Yeah, yeah. I'm fired, I'm at the Hatib, no more work in the Tarbush Hookah. Because before, my brother is busy, that's why no come. Or I'm leave 18 because I have kids. I leave at 12 a.m., but after I'm leave, just to clean the hookah, I tell, I fire him. No more work now.
And she risks losing the business now in its entirety if he even comes on the parking lot?
No come back.
There's clearly a zero tolerance policy spelled out in this alternate resolution, and respectfully, I request the council adopt that.
Yeah. As stated, city can revoke a license in any instance, so I just want to remind you of that.
Any other questions from Councilman Henderson?
Can we have Nancy come up and ask her about her conversation, or is that not?
Sure.
Can we, Nancy, do you mind, Nancy? I hate to put you on the spot.
I don't mind at all. Um, yes.
The question specifically would be, the conversations you had with the owner, do you feel comfortable, a level of comfort with the process going forward?
Well, I think that they do understand that there is a zero tolerance, and providing them with the information, I think that that is some good information that they will have and be able to take that forward. I don't know if I can say anything more. Does that make sense?
Sure. Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
Nancy? I have one more question. You happen to have a training program for a hookah lounge similar to the tips training program that you have for the liquor violations?
Well, what I provided the owner was information to prevent the sales of tobacco products, whether it be the hookah, a pipe, or if you roll a cigarette, all these different ways of smoking the tobacco.
We don't have a training program that we can require them to...
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, I have another question for City Attorney Bloom. Now, this, lack of a better term, the year...
Moratorium.
Thank you, moratorium. Now, this will extend to the new owners, right?
It's not a new owner, it's actually a manager. The owner is going to remain as the owner, but I believe that she has a new manager, and it is correct that the new manager has already been approved, and I don't know as far as the ownership. I don't know if there are discussions about that, but right now, she is still the owner.
Okay.
Councilman Baker?
Yeah, I appreciate you coming. I think that what's difficult for me, and maybe some others up here, is that, you know, we see that you get that there's zero tolerance now, and that you care now, but the question I have is, or the perception I have is that maybe you didn't care as much before now, until you were brought before us. And we do the liquor violation hearings, this is a big issue in our community, and it was very, it was before my time on council when this was enacted, the hookah lounges ordinance, but remorse is key in these kind of situations, and, you know, I'm not sure I'm getting the feeling that you really understand the gravity of before. Yes, the manager won't, he can't, or that man can't come on the premises anymore, but it's easy to say, oh, now, of course, nothing bad will happen, I get it now, but it just, the feeling to me is that you didn't care, or you weren't as involved as you should have been prior to this. And I have a hard time wrapping my head around that and saying, okay, let's give you another chance, when there should have been zero tolerance from the beginning. So, I, and I, I'm an attorney also, and I understand what attorneys do, but there's a lack of remorse in this presentation for me. I'm just, I got to be honest.
I, you know, respectfully, Councilman...
Could you use the microphone, please? Thank you.
Respectfully, I think that's an unfair characterization. I think that, you know, my client certainly understands the language, but she's very remorseful, remorseful. They've put a ton of money into this business, and it might be a cultural thing that what you're not seeing is what you would, what you had hoped to see, but, you know, we're here asking for a second chance at the end of the day. And I think every council member's concerns are addressed right here in this alternate resolution. Is there, did you take an exception with anything that's in this alternative resolution?
No, with all due respect, I think it's maybe your presentation that is rubbing me a little wrong way with this, and I don't mean to do it back and forth, it's not about that, but if, and it's not cultural, it's not anything other than, you know, there was a zero tolerance policy before, there were two violations within three days, or two days within each other. I just don't know that this is a second chance opportunity for me. I don't know that, I feel like the proper level of understanding and remorse has been character are presented to me to make me feel that I want to give it a second chance. I don't know that the owner truly does care at this point, and maybe that's my mistake, but that's what I'm reading right now, so I'm having a difficult time. But I have the right, as recommended by the acting city manager, to revoke the license. But I have the right, as recommended by the acting city manager, to revoke the license two weeks ago.
And we do have this alternate resolution that we worked out as well.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
I know City Attorney Bloom said that she didn't recall new ownership in the future, but I thought I heard you specifically state that. Is that, where are you at with that?
Yes, the new manager who I mentioned is here, Mr. Sekir Puncha Baye, he is considering acquiring or purchasing the lounge for my clients. Obviously, that's all contingent upon what happens this evening. There's no smoking license, there's no business. Any other questions? Councilman Pennington?
We do have a zero tolerance for this, for this type of business, like Councilman Henderson said, but we also have given second chances to many of the businesses that come before us with liquor violations. So to be unduly punitive at this point and not giving someone a second chance, you know, I don't think, I wouldn't support that.
And Councilman Baker?
I agree with Councilman Pennington and I guess for me, again, the one difference is we're very hard on those people who come up here for liquor violations and they plead their case and are respectful and get training and vow to do anything possible. And I just want to make sure that is crystal clear to this owner, to any future owner, that if we do approve this alternate resolution, I mean, it is, it could happen fast and the due process rights are given. So I, of course, believe in second chances, but when we give second chances for liquor violation hearings, I feel that there's a much more remorseful presentation and understanding, I guess is my issue.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I agree with Councilman Pennington. Quite often, we have liquor violations come before us and I can't remember ever not giving a second chance. Maybe we have, but it's very, very rare. It's also very rare for us to have language like this for someone that comes before us that violated a liquor license, that if they did one thing wrong, that they would lose their license. I think that's, you can't do much better than that when you give somebody a second chance, that if they, they are going to lose their license and they agree that they're going to lose their license. So that's where I can live with the way that it's written here. I think I hear her saying that she fired, as soon as she became aware of the issue, she fired the manager. So I'm going to move the resolution as printed in the agenda packet, we'll see where it goes. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve H1, which is the Tarbush Hookah Lounge License Suspension, as printed in the agenda packet, which would indicate that we've been persuaded that the following violations did occur on March 15th, two on 5th to 15th, two on the 18th. And all provisions that are listed in the resolution will be strictly enforced. Any further discussion? Councilman Hamilton?
Yeah, just my comment, I'd be willing to follow our standard and give a second chance if there was just one violation, but the fact that three days later, there was another one is deeply disturbing to me and I'm not going to support this because I support revoking the license because of the multiple violations. That doesn't sit well with me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderick?
I too am, I'm gonna take a tough stance and it's difficult to do face to face. But we've been having issues and we've been trying to draw a line in the sand. Safety is just the number one priority and we have rules, laws, ordinances for a reason to be followed. It wasn't one, it wasn't just one. And we expect these establishments to be managed with excellence from the very beginning. We need that, we really need that in the city and I'm afraid of setting a precedent that there's wiggle room, that there's a gray area, that the line is, depends on the day. So I'm going to be very, very tough on this. I want to send at least a personal signal that there is zero tolerance from the get-go and we want our community to be protected and follow the laws and the ordinances. It's very important.
Any other comments? Mayor Protem Abraham?
I wanted to make a comment on the diversity of Troy and the fact that this council very much embraces that diversity, cultures, religions, age, sex, every way you can possibly think of diversity. You made a comment of, you know, maybe we didn't understand or that there might be a cultural difference. I just wanted to make the comment, I think this council understands our community as diverse as it is and I don't think you intended to make a comment that might be troubling, but I wanted to make sure that it was understood, this has nothing to do with that.
Well, absolutely, and I certainly didn't imply that. I just merely wanted to convey that she is very remorseful for being in the position that she's in and she's going to do everything she can and ascertain it's not going to happen again.
I will be voting no on this resolution. I think four violations, well, one, it's four violations, too many, but there's a reason we have zero tolerance and there is a pattern and it's not just management that needs to be in tight control, it's also ownership.
Any other comments from council? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Yeah, just one last thing. Again, you know, I have to go back to three or four or five years ago when we put the ordinance in place. The ordinance was very clear and the ordinance was put together because of several really bad circumstances and we were forced to put an ordinance together. And for somebody to come in and buy a business in the city of Troy and not understand, all there is to know about that ordinance and how they should function as a business is disturbing. So, you know, where I would love to give a second chance, you know, I'm about second chances, I've done this in my career here as a city councilperson. I, again, I think the responsibility is on the owner to know, you know, coming into a community, what the expectations are. And these expectations weren't hidden, they're very visible and we talked at length, several meetings, before we put this ordinance together. And, you know, that, again, I just, I have a real difficult time knowing somebody would put their money into a business and not research fully and police their own circumstances. In fact, that's one of the, one of the problems we had with one of the hookah lounges, they indicated that what happened in their parking lot wasn't their responsibility. And that is completely not the right attitude to have as a business owner. What happens in your facility is exactly your responsibility. And to that end, I have a real difficult time supporting a second chance in this situation.
Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. I, the primary, the remorse issue aside, if this was a liquor violation hearing and we had four violations over a period of days, that's almost unprecedented for what we see come before us. Usually, we have one violation and it's dealt with it. I can't support a second chance with four violations over three days. It's, it just doesn't feel right to me when the laws were clearly stated, what the regulation should be.
Councilman Pennington?
The bottom of the resolution is a little confusing. It says it confirms the suspension of the hookah lounge and then the next sentence says it shall be reinstated as of April 23rd, so we can clear that language up a little bit.
City Attorney Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. The resolution actually was intentionally done that way because it has been suspended and then if you wanted to rescind that suspension and reinstate the license, then that would happen with the resolution. So that's, it was, hopefully trying to take into account the situation.
Great, thank you, I just want to clear that up.
If this motion fails, there would have to be an additional resolution, correct?
Yes, and our city clerk has already forwarded me the language and I would be, again, if this does fail, I'm happy to bring back the resolution for council that was in the last agenda packet, if council wishes to have it.
Councilman Henderson?
If, if we suspend, how long is the suspension for typically in this situation? Forever? Or can we make a provision that it's suspended until new ownership is negotiated and worked through? I mean, what are the details there?
You could do that. That is an option that you, you know, would have. It's your, you know, this is to you and so you could revoke it, you absolutely have the right to revoke it, but you could continue it, but there would have to be something that it would be contingent upon. So, for example, if it's, you know, if they were able to sell the business and produced proof that they were able to sell the business, then, then city council could reconsider that and lift the suspension. They could come back to you and prove that they had, that they had satisfied the condition and then city council could at that point in time vote to reinstate.
I think you might have a hard time getting somebody to buy it without the knowledge that city council might approve it, but who knows? Any other discussion on the motion on the table? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Hamilton?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Councilmember Hoderick?
No.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion fails.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
No.
Thank you for your time. I think there'll probably be an additional resolution coming forward. City Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, if there was an interest, I can read the resolution that appeared in the last council agenda packet, if there's an interest in that, happy to do that.
There are interest from a city council member to Councilman Henderson?
Without reading it, can you paraphrase?
Paraphrasing would be that there was a violation for the Tarbush Hookah Lounge, 4939 Hookah, Rochester Road in Troy, Michigan, and that the owner was sent notification of the suspension that they requested a hearing, a due process hearing was afforded to them, and that council is persuaded that there were four violations occurring on March 15th and March 18th of the ordinance, and that as a result of the violations, the Troy City Council revokes the smoking lounge issued to Tarbush Hookah Lounge as permitted by the city of Troy ordinances effective immediately and also directing that the resolution be forwarded to the State of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Tobacco Section.
Quite a paraphrase.
Are you moving that?
Yeah, support more.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve the resolution that was read by City Attorney Bloom into the record. Any discussion on that? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. As a result of the resolution, the license has been terminated. Thank you for your time. Thank you. H2 is next on the agenda, it's an award, to award a standard purchasing resolution eight, which is a tennis facility management services. Elaine Bowe, our recreation director, is coming forward. This has also been postponed from a previous city council meeting. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. April 9th, city council asked the city administration to do additional research on the two companies that had put in RFPs for the tennis facility management services. And we did do that extensively. We did not discover anything that would disqualify either of the two firms bidding on management for these operations.
Thank you. We, we're going to give the opportunity for the petitioner to speak. Would you ask them to come forward, please? Mr. Miller, while they're coming up here, it's still staff's recommendation to go with the resolution that's printed.
Recommendation still stands, yes.
Thank you. Could you use the microphone, please?
Sure.
Good evening.
I'm Brian DiVirgilio. This is Chris Dobson and Mike Jacobson. Thank the council for letting us come up here. I just wanted to go over a little bit of our proposal here with everyone, just to make sure everyone kind of understands what we were proposing for the city. It's a very positive, we had a very positive business plan and we want to just kind of go over it real quickly with you guys and let Chris and Mike add their comments, too. We were offering complimentary memberships to Troy residents to encourage more play, to bring more people from the city into the program. We think it's a very positive thing. We also, we also established a special membership for the Troy business community, another special membership to try to bring more people from Troy into the actual playing into the club. I think there's 50 some odd percent right now. We'd like to increase that number and bring more people into the city to play. We also proposed two brand-new tennis domes with brand-new heating and cooling systems, one dome to remain up the entire year, that will allow for all play, all, play for all throughout the year, even in the summer, which will allow for better USTA, you know, scheduling and organization. That was a big part of our plan, too. We thought it would be a great benefit for the city if everyone would agree to that. That was part of our business plan also. We also had a lot of capital improvements, over 50,000, that we thought was, that were needed within the, within the club. You know, being at the club and looking at it, it's a very nice club, but we thought we could update it, you know, with the locker rooms, maybe an updated architectural design in the front, some new tile, just some new flooring, some new general, just some general, you know, capital improvements. Also part of our proposal, we propose to have all the existing staff keep their positions if they choose to do so. All the tennis professionals are 1099, so they would continue to be customers and the administrative staff would be allowed to continue on if they chose to do so. So that we're not trying to dismantle the club, we're not trying to change the family atmosphere of Troy. We'd like to keep it, a lot of the things that are there already and kind of build upon that. We'd like to build, you know, the teaching program. We'd like to add more pros if necessary. We'd like to do more things, more innovative things there and just build things. And we're people with a lot of energy, a lot of positive experience. Myself and Chris have over 60 years combined experience in just being involved in tennis and running clubs, being a part of, being a part of clubs, being a teaching pro at a club. We've been involved in kind of every aspect of, in now owning a club with Wesson. So we've been involved from the ground level all the way to the top. So we feel that we're kind of in the trenches and we're very capable of doing whatever's necessary to take Troy to the next level in terms of what our vision was. But it's a very positive vision, we're not interested in any type of negative, any negative things. We want to make it a very positive experience for the city residents and for the people that play there and for everyone who works there. So I just want to get that out there. We want to keep all the existing permanent court time. We're not going to dismantle and throw people out of the club, I don't, I don't know, but we're not doing any of that, I want to make that very clear. And we have a lot of infrastructure, if you looked at the proposal, we have a lot of infrastructure improvements that are very necessary at Troy in terms of new accounting systems, new software systems. You know, some of the people spoke tonight about that and it's very, very, will make it a lot more, kind of streamline the process for the residents and the members to get their court time and to sign up and for the pros to kind of, you know, use the system to build their own base, build their own clientele up. We're all about, you know, positive atmosphere and having everyone be entrepreneurs and do, you know, and be able to achieve what they need to achieve. So I'd like to turn it over to Chris and Mike here and then if there's any questions, you know, after, we'd be more than happy to answer those questions also. you know, after, we'd be more than happy to answer those questions also. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This is a very spirited topic, obviously, and I think that the greatest concern on existing Troy members are just a fear of change, and I completely understand that. And I think what makes the Troy Racquet Club somewhat unique, along with Wesson Indoor Tennis Club, is that they are a little bit of an obsolete business model. There are very few tennis-only clubs left anymore, and you've got major clubs like a Lifetime Fitness where it's a corporation and there's multiple revenue streams, and it's just a very different feel. And so there's a sort of special quality to Troy Racquet Club, and we just want to make sure that those members know that we get that more than any other operators in the area, because it's our identical business model, and it's something that we really, really embrace, that feel when you walk into a club. And so, I understand the fear of the unknown. Is it going to change? Is my experience at the club going to be different? But all I can say is we are completely committed to just making that in our mind the best possible experience that we can for existing members. There's great things going on there, and our philosophy still stands. Anyone interested in continuing to work there, if we were to go in and take that over, is welcome to do so. And so, the fear of change, I think is a little bit, it's being a little bit misunderstood, because I want to comment on one change that has taken place at the Troy Racquet Club, and it's, there's only been two changes in the last twenty years, and those changes were made by Brian DiVirgilio when he was there. And what he did was he, he implemented the Troy Tennis Academy and the summer program, which were immediate successes. They were resisted at the initial time of the, of, when he brought that to the ownership's attention, and it's still in operation today, and it's still incredibly successful today. It's provided the existing pros an opportunity to make more money. It's an excellent business model, and it's also continued to grow the community tennis play by having a summer program that didn't exist until he implemented that, and that has provided countless Troy residents the ability to play year-round. And if that was a bad change, they would have eliminated that the minute he left that facility. And so, it's just, change can sometimes be a little bit, I think, misinterpreted. We're not looking to turn things upside down. And we, you know, we're sort of looking at some other Troy athletic facilities, such as a Troy Sports Center, which is a phenomenal athletic facility. Troy Gymnastics, which is maybe the biggest gymnastics program in the state. And yeah, we would like the Troy Racquet Club to be on par with someone of those other athletic facilities, where they're not only a great service to the community, to Troy residents, but they also draw on from surrounding communities as well, and they're known as, in the metropolitan area, just one of the premier facilities in that field. And we want Troy Racquet Club to be on that level. This city deserves a tennis facility of that level, and we are very confident we can provide that. And I think that's the, probably the, the, what we're calling into question the most right here is, who is best qualified to do that? And I commend Don Pierce for having the vision to put this club together, because as you've heard, we know what it's like to have a startup business. It's painful. And, you know, we've gone through this process, and what he's done for the last forty-one years should be, there's, I, I respect it completely, but I think that we're looking at a changing of the guard here, and who's really in the best position to move forward for the next twenty years and take this club in the right direction. And that's what we're calling to question. There's been a lot of things said that the existing staff would only stay if TRC has awarded the, the bid. And I do believe that, but I can tell you right now that we have talked to existing staff there as well, that are willing to stay. Good quality professionals that have large clientels that are willing to stay on and work for us. These employees are in a very difficult position right now. They are, they're, they don't know, there's an expiration date on their existing club, and so they're in a very tough position, and I respect that, and we're trying to be sensitive to that. But the bottom line is, we are good operators. You've heard that from numerous people tonight, and we will do right by anybody who wants to stay there and work. And so that's a major point that we wanted to try to get across to everybody here. You know, during this process, I, I don't have much experience dealing with the city council, to be honest with you, and I, trying to figure out what we're going, how, how this process is working and, and who I'm going to be dealing with. I went online and I went to the Troy City Council website, and on the homepage, right there, the first tab underneath is what we call a code of ethics, and I just clicked on it, and I found it really, really interesting. And what it states is just what the Troy council shall do, and something just jumped off the paper to me, and it said, "The Troy council shall render all decisions based upon the available facts and independent judgment, rather than succumbing to influence of individuals or special interest groups." And I think that's something we really need to take into account tonight, because you're hearing a lot of passion, and you're hearing a lot of emotion, but if you apply that to us, that logic or that way of thinking, if you apply that to us, how would the council come back and say, "We have two proposals. One has a business plan, one doesn't. One has a marketing plan, one doesn't. One has projected membership growth, one doesn't. One has fewer capital improvements to the building. One, one doesn't offer reciprocity, which means access to fewer indoor courts during the indoor season. One has significantly less revenue share with the city. One was not recommended by the selection committee. And furthermore, it's being passed over to somebody who really has no industry background whatsoever." And I just don't know how you can look at these factors and make a factual decision and not factor in some sort of individual or emotional influence. And so, we just really encourage you to please take that under consideration. And I feel like the only deterrent you might have would be a, a possible blowback from existing members that would say, "Yes, we're unhappy that you awarded it to a new management company." And yes, change is going to be a little difficult, but you should be able to respond to all of those emails, voicemails with a clear conscience and ease, simply stating, "One proposal was significantly better than the other, and one operator is significantly more qualified than the other, and there was significant amount of revenue offered to the city with one as well." And I just don't think we can bury these, these, these facts, these available facts. And so, what I just, I'm asking you on my behalf and Brian's behalf, is allow this facility to grow and flourish in the community. Let Troy Racquet Club get on par with other Troy athletic facilities. We're going to grow membership. We're going to increase play in the, in the Troy community. These are not bad things, and we have a proven track record of being able to do those things. Brian has already done it in the city of Troy, and he's the only person who's done it in the city of Troy over the last twenty years. So, I urge the council to not let individual influence, sorry, individual influence affect your decision, but do its best for the facility over the next twenty years. Put the Troy Racquet Club on the best possible twenty-year path. We will make you proud, we will make the city proud of their tennis facility. And I want to say one more thing in closing, that I guarantee to those members that choose to stay and play, and those existing staff that choose to stay and work, they will be very glad they did. I absolutely guarantee that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Nice job, guys. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. We've met before. We were here two weeks ago after my clients and my friends and my fellow tennis players had won the award by the selection committee to obtain the management contract at Troy Racquet Club. Since that time, there's, there was supposed to be some vetting done, and we invited everyone on council, the mayor, to come to Wesson. We invited the selection committee to come to Wesson. We hope you did, because you would see what a family-oriented place Wesson is. Both my kids play there, my parents go there, my friends go there. My friends also play some at Troy Racquet Club, but they enjoy the experience at Wesson. They enjoy it because the millennials like to use their phones to arrange court time. The parents like the organization at Wesson. The pros, as you've heard, unbelievable pros at Wesson. And as Brian and Chris have stated, the pros at Troy will remain. They have that option to do so, and we invite them to do so. From a lawyer's perspective now, some of the things that have happened here are confusing. An RFP was issued. The RFP contained very deliberate rules, timelines, and guidelines. My client, and hopefully Mr. Pierce, followed those to the T. My clients won the award fair and square. The committee, the council and the mayor and Troy government should take a look at representing the eighty-five thousand citizens of Troy. The mission statement I looked up today online talks about the council and the government want to promote innovation. That's what Wesson brought. That's what the selection committee recognized. The selection committee not only awarded it, they said, quote, "It is in the best interest of the city to award the contract to all core tennis." That's after four month, a four-month process, not a couple of nights where people's emotions get off track, not a couple of nights where people can say disparaging statements about one another. We are positive at Wesson. You haven't heard one negative thing. One thing that's important, the RFP did not contain one item, one line about awarding points to the incumbent. Not one line. There was nothing about incumbency factoring into this RFP program, and I applaud whoever wrote that RFP for that, because that would detract almost every club owner and operator from submitting a bid. You go one step further here, you have twenty, sixty years of experience on one side. You have Mr. Pierce, who, to be applauded for his candor, said he's selling his membership interest to another member, to a tennis player. That tennis player, Mr. Schoen and his wife, work full-time. They are full-time. Mr. Schoen owns a business, small business. Mrs. Schoen's in advertising. They work full-time. Well, my clients work full-time in the tennis industry, and they attached their resume, the Schoens attached their resume to the bid package. If you look at their resumes, there is not one line about tennis management experience. There is not one time enter, about entering to contracts with the government and municipal relations. Nothing is mentioned in those resumes. So not only do you have an incumbent complaining, you have a person who stands to profit from the incumbent getting the RFP. Well, that's not fair. That's not what we signed up for, and that's not what the RFP said, and that's not what the selection committee said. The selection committee made it clear. They waited every score, they carefully vetted after Mr. Baker asked them to vet some more, and they still stand behind their recommendation. And we asked you to do that, too. One other thing. The other proposal, which I still have trouble that we're even talking about it, since we won the RFP process and it was vetted, we haven't seen an LOI between Mr. Pierce and Mr. Schoen, that you haven't seen a contract between them. So it would set a terrible precedent for us, any city government, to allow an RFP to go to someone who doesn't even respond to the RFP, because if that person responded to the RFP, they wouldn't be in the running, because they have no tennis, tennis management experience. So, with no LOI in place, you don't know what the contract, you don't know what the funds are. We're very transparent. At Wesson, we are very transparent. We're transparent about our tennis programs. You heard all the pros talk about how great Wesson is and how well they're treated. You heard Wesson members, who are also members of Troy Racquet Club, compare the clubs. We asked all of you to visit the club. I wouldn't be here in the tennis community, nor as a lawyer representing these two fine individuals, if I didn't believe in what they do on a daily basis. And that would be an incredible experience for the residents of Troy. As Chris said, Brian's the one who started the Troy Tennis Academy. That keeps all your youth playing, all of them playing during the summer. They make it enjoyable. It's a twenty-year contract. While twenty-seven thousand or thirty thousand a year difference in the proposal might not seem big, it's six hundred thousand dollars over twenty years to the city government. It's a six hundred thousand dollar different proposal. That's a lot of money. We appreciate your time. We hope you stand by this, the selection committee's recommendation, and that is a strong recommendation. Page three, their recommendation on the city council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council for the petitioners? Councilman Hamilton?
Questions for Brian. Can you speak in the microphone and explain how your separation from TRC originally occurred, and what were the details of that?
The details of the separation was, Don came to me and said he was not renewing, I was an independent contractor. He told me I was, he was not renewing my contract, because I was not going to work for him, was exact words, and that he did say that no one was supporting me after that. That was the details of it. That was the absolute truth of the conversation.
Councilman Henderson?
There's a lot, a lot of noise in this particular situation, and, you know, we listen to residents, constituents, we listen to petitioners, winners of awards, we, we listen to all the details. I, I met with you folks, I talked with Tom Schoen, Don Pierce's legendary in, in Troy Racquet Club, so, you know, we, we understand his position as well. That said, I, if, if it's appropriate and you, you feel ready to respond to this, there is one incident that was brought up regarding non-payment of a, of a bill, and, and you mentioned that to me, and I, I just would like to give you the opportunity to address that.
Sure. I will address that.
Microphone, please, yeah.
Thank you. What was brought up was an issue where a contractor who assisted in installing the bubble at Wesson in Pontiac got concerned of whether or not he was being paid appropriately. April 2015, three years ago, the lawyer at the time for Wesson wrote to the contractor and said, "Look, you have done shoddy workmanship. You have caused us significant delays. We can show you by invoices what those delays have cost us and how we had to go out and replace that particular contractor." Again, that was three years ago, April 2015. At the end of that letter, and which has been submitted to council and Ms. Bloom, at the end of that letter in April 2015, it said, "Why don't we sit down and see if we can resolve our issues?" At no time was any further communication forthcoming from the vendor. He never reached out, never had a lawyer reach out, never came to the Wesson bubble to seek payment, never did anything. We continued along our business. Fast forward to February 2018. My clients show up at the bid meeting, the pre-meeting, to talk about the bid with the selection committee. A day or two later, that contractor showed up at Wesson unannounced, met Mr. Dobson there. Mr. Dobson wasn't aware he was coming, had words with Mr. Dobson to the effect, "I won't interfere with your bid contract to the city of Troy unless you, if you pay me." Those were the exact words. I, on behalf of Mr. Dobson and the Wesson Tennis Club and All Core Tennis Club, immediately sent a cease and desist letter to that contractor. Haven't heard from that contractor, haven't heard from a lawyer for that contractor. That contractor didn't show up. The amount in controversy, we say we're owed thousands of dollars. He says he's owed about approximately fourteen thousand dollars, I believe. We say we are obviously owed more. We say we are obviously owed more. He then shows up in front of this council last week or two weeks ago and proceeds to disparage my clients, and again, trying to interfere. Those are the exact things that happened. We submitted the letters to council. There are no, this contractor never placed a lien on Wesson, never threatened a lien on Wesson. There are no liens on Wesson. That was, that was the dispute in a nutshell.
And I want to, I'd like to add one more thing related to that, because this is a sensitive issue. The dome we're talking about was an existing dome from another site. We moved it over to our new facility. Therefore, it had to be sort of refitted to fit on our grade B. That's where the workmanship was done incorrectly. And now, this is not a my opinion versus his opinion issue, and I think that's really the key to this. We flew in two representatives of the Ryzen Dome Company from St. Louis. They are the ones that came to the conclusion that, A, the dome was not fitted correctly, and the new material was not adhesive, the adhesive or the way it was adhered to the, to the old dome was incorrect. They came up with the cost to not only repair, but then to install correctly. And that's what the basis of our dispute was. And I think that's just a very, very key piece of the puzzle that fills in a lot of the blanks. And so this is a dome expert, not me, not Tim, but this is the manufacturer of the Dome Company from St. Louis flying in two people to Pontiac Mission, Michigan to evaluate that dome installation.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, just a follow-up. I just felt compelled to give you the opportunity to explain that, because again, there's always two sides to every issue. I understand that. Some of the chatter, it's a he said, she said sort of thing. You know, you have to give some credence to that as well, but when there's proof, evidence, paperwork, you should be able to defend yourself, and I appreciate it.
Questions, Councilman Pennington?
Actually, there's a question for management. I'm not sure who would answer this, but a 10-year contract with two five-year renewals, why is this such a long contract when the golf courses, contracts with Billy Casper is, I think, three years? Just curious if anyone has information on that.
I don't know. I'm not sure about the Billy Casper one that kind of threw me off face. I was just looking at this, and the reason why is that we want a long-term continuity.
And also infrastructure investment. I mean, there's a significant infrastructure investment, and so that's why we generally have had longer contracts when it comes to tennis.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Thank you. In all fairness, we allow 15 minutes for a petitioner to speak. You did go over that a little bit, and I'm going to offer Mr. Pierce an opportunity if you want to come up and speak. You used up three minutes. I'll give you 12 if you want to come up and speak.
May I start?
Are you a petitioner?
Yes.
Mr. Schoen is a petitioner?
No.
Okay.
He's who's taking over for Pierce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're all aware of the fact that we need to make some improvements to the club, but TRC has been servicing the city of Troy, as we said, for 40-odd years. We've got a detailed, I don't know if you guys have received this, plan of capital improvements that we're putting in, including everything All Court mentioned. We are updating the software. We're updating the general ledger system. We're doing automated court booking. I didn't hear them mention resurfacing the courts, and that's a big reason for the 10-year thing. The payoff on domes of that nature, of that expense, probably range in the seven to nine year timeframe, based on what we're talking. But obviously, we're looking at making a ton of improvements to the club. That being said, as I stated two weeks ago, I think the committee was, did an excellent job in, you know, putting out an RFP, but it was a pretty quick turnaround. I believe it was 60 days. I thought the counselor said four months. I think it was pretty fast, and based on the blowback we received from members and employees, we just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that there are some issues and concerns with another group coming in from Pontiac. How they're going to manage it, who's going to manage it, how they're financially going to cover everything. If Wesson is so successful, how are they going to put pros and staff and things like that over to Troy? So, anyway, any questions?
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Mr. Slater?
Councilman Hamilton?
I'd like to call a strict five-minute recess. That's okay? I know we have a lot to cover.
As long as questions, are there any further que, any further que? I did have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
It's kind of a legal question. It was referenced that Mr. Schoen, if he had, if he had been doing the RFP on his own without Mr. Pierce, that he wouldn't have been qualified for, for the RFP. Is that correct?
What I can-
Because of, because of his prior experience?
What I can say is that the committee did review both proposals, and it was clear that it would be Mr. Pierce advising, he would be part of it continuing, continuing on, as well as the Schoens. We, and I want to make it clear as well, that there was no award. City council doesn't make an award. City council ma, I mean, city administration, we make the recommendation, and it's city council that chooses who the award would be granted to. So I just did want to clarify that as well.
Mayor?
Mr. Miller?
Just further clarification, the way that the proposal was submitted is that the Schoens had stated that they would become, you know, have a membership interest in the LLC, and they, but there was no document formalizing that in the RFP. They just said that they were going to do it.
Mr. Pierce, did you want to clarify that?
We are still in this process, because the bid hasn't been awarded yet, so everything is contingent. It is being worked out by the attorneys, so we can comport with the requirements of the RF, of the RFP. Not an unusual transaction, except in this case, we've got a three-party contract going on. The two principals are trying to square up their interests and financial infusion, along with the interests of the city of Troy, which is the third party that makes it a little bit more challenging. More, more parties at the table, I'll say. So.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson? Maybe directed to the city attorney and Mr. Pierce, is it, if, if the award were to go to Troy Racquet Club, and then we begin negotiations, correct, with regard to a contract, can we require a letter of intent in the new contract, or is that not a requirement that we could?
That would be something that absolutely, we'd need to make sure that we knew who was the owner, and that would be, that would be something that could be buttoned up at that time.
Okay. And could we also make the requirement that Mr. Pierce stay on as a consultant for any amount of time, or?
That could also be put in the contract as well.
As I think was stated at a previous hearing, I'm planning on being very much involved with the club, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's been a request for a five-minute recess. We will reconvene at 10:50. Thank you.[1146.13]
Okay, we're back in session. The council like to move a resolution to get one on the table for discussion. Councilman Pennington?
Move H2 of the award, standard purchasing resolution eight, tennis facility management services as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson that we approve H2, which is the award to standard purchasing resolution eight, tennis facility management services as printed in the agenda packet. Who wants to go first? Councilman Henderson.
I'm not shy. So, I questioned the acting city manager as soon as we got information that a change was recommended. And, one of the couple of questions that I had asked is, you know, is the extra $27,000 a year worth making a change to something that's been in place for 40 years? And, we've gotten a lot of emails, both pro, both con. I've done my own due diligence, talked to the principals of the Western Group. I did take a chance and opportunity to go see your facility. It was a very nice facility. I spent an afternoon at the Troy Racquet Club, not being a tennis player, you know, I felt it was my responsibility to go and see what was there. Also, very nice facility. I talked to a couple patrons. I didn't do that at Weston, I didn't feel that that was my place there. In Troy, that's a different scenario, so the patrons there were all very supportive. I didn't tell them who I was, I just asked basic questions. They were all very happy with the lessons that their kids were partaking in. Talked to a couple of the employees, very happy with the process. Again, I stand by my initial gut feeling. Sometimes you get a gut feeling and you make decisions based on that gut feeling. And I stand by my original gut, and that's to re-award the project to Mr. Pierce. And, the questions that I asked the city attorney earlier with regard to a letter of intent and consultative advice from Mr. Pierce are all important factors for me. I think that's gotta be a requirement in order for us to be able to approve this. If that wasn't there, then my decision-making process might be a little bit different. I also want to acknowledge all the emails that we sent. I don't think I've ever seen as many emails come before us on any topic. And, I apologize. I think I responded to about five, but, you know, when you, and they were five, just, the five that I responded to were clearly to just clear up the process, because people had a misunderstanding about what the process is. So, again, I appreciate all the emails that I got, both sides. I apologize for not responding to them, there's just not enough time to do that. So, but again, I appreciate the fact that we had an RFP that went out. There was somebody that was awarded, or not awarded the RFP, but a recommendation came from city management. But, we've done this in the past. When we had ambulatory services that were in front of us, we wanted to make a big change, or the city management wanted to make a big change, and as a council, we decided to come together and not make that change. And, certainly, there was a case for making the change in that scenario, but, again, you know, we felt an obligation to continue premier services to the community that Alliance serves. So, I don't see this as much different than that scenario. So, to that end, I, you know, I feel that we should honor a longstanding relationship and continue on with the services that we're accustomed to having.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderek?
Well, write it down, Councilman Henderson and Councilwoman Hoderek are on the same page tonight.
Oh.
Teasing, we've been on the same page before, but, we like to give one another hard time, and I just want to add some levity. The RFP process that staff went through is an important rubric that gets used, that gives us some guidance. And then, our role on top of that is to represent what the people who elect us, expect us to get a look and a feel to the community itself. I think it's outstanding what you all have achieved in Pontiac. I am cheering on the city of Pontiac every day. I'm glad that you went in there and have done what sounds like from the people who've been there are very pleased with, and that is outstanding. I think if I was hearing that that same kind of change is desired here by the people who vote here for us to represent them, I'd want to embrace it. What I have heard, through so many emails, I was cross-eyed trying to keep up with them, and I, that came in today, I tried to respond to all of them, I probably missed some, and I didn't respond to any of them that came today. But, they were all read, I think, by all of us, and was that there is this desire for this club to be what it is. That's not to say that what you have to offer isn't a great thing, but my decision-making here is to look at that recommendation from the RFP and represent what the community members are telling me. Some of the noise aside, I don't want you to assume that I'm listening to, there is a sincere desire that came from many people, countless people, including phone calls and emails of what the desire is for this club in our city, and that's what I want to represent here tonight. I really appreciate the input. This is how, as messy as this feels and looks like, this is how the process works, and we have done this another time. And I really appreciate the involvement of everyone on both sides of this discussion, if you will. The input is valuable, and it helps us get a very, very good check of what we're voting for and what we're turning away, eyes wide open. So, that's where I stand.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton?
Yeah, I share the same sentiments as both of them. A 40-year track record is just, and to have so many people so happy with that management over 40 years just tells me a lot. I don't appreciate the new offer, but there's just not enough there for me to see that a change is justified. So, I'd like to move to amend this resolution and award the contract to Troy Racquet Club. How about seeing?
Well, there is a resolution on the table that, whether you want to have a vote on that or not, and then do another resolution, or give everyone an opportunity to speak on that resolution?
Okay, sure, I'll withdraw it if you're not.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
I'll go next. Well, seems to me that All Court Tennis will be around for many years to come, and if for some reason Troy Racquet Club cannot, you know, fulfill what they've been doing for the last 40 years, I'm sure they'll be there with open arms, but, as a small businessman who's been around the city many years myself, I appreciate a 40-year commitment. And, we had many people send us many emails from both sides. Me, on the other hand, I don't respond to emails, especially a couple of hundred of them, just because I don't have that kind of time, but, you know, we did read them, and I gotta tell you, the ones that were two or three hundred words, I did skim over, but we read them all. And I appreciate your passion, and I will be supporting Troy Racquet Club also.
Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. I, wow, I have to talk about the emails just for a second. I've, every other email I've gotten regarding an issue, I've responded to up until this issue. You guys were overwhelming, so I appreciate that, and it was, I did read them all, but I couldn't keep up in response, so I apologize for that. I think that the difficulty here is that we are presented with two good options for two different reasons, and it's hard to, actually, I think Toby Beekner said something along, there's two good options and you have a hard decision to make, and it's right, he's right. Because, how do you, how do you make a vote against city management's recommendation when you have what looks to be a solid proposal put before you? On the one hand, on the other hand, how do you look the people who, look the people who you see in the grocery store, who are your neighbors, and tell them, you know, your opinion didn't matter to me? How do you do that? Councilman Hoderek's right, you know, we represent all the people of the city, which is tough, because sometimes they have different views, but we do our best to try to do what the people tell us that they want to have done. And, I am very impressed with All Court Tennis and Weston and everything I've heard, and I met with you folks, and you were honest and straightforward and answered some difficult questions about things that were said about you, which I can tell you, I greatly respect you for that. I know it's difficult to sit in a chair and have people say horrible things about you in front of a large body, I know that's not easy, so I greatly respect your ability to sit through that and to share your honest feelings with me after the fact. I don't know Mr. Pierce, I don't know Mr. Schoen. I'm, obviously, it's difficult to go against a 40-year track record. Now, I've heard from everybody that maybe 40 years, it hasn't been perfect, there's always room for improvement, and I'm hopeful that if this contract, if it goes to Mr. Schoen and his wife, there will be changes implemented for the positive, things that I'm hearing in the community need to be done. I did hear after the last meeting that, you know, there were concerns about some things over time that need to be addressed, so I'm hopeful that that can happen, and I'm sure that it will. With Councilman Henderson's questions to the city attorney about including information in our contract negotiations about exactly who the principals are going to be, I think that's key also, because good points were raised about, you know, how that system is working. We are a community that has grown dramatically over the past 40 years, and sometimes it seems like the community wants to put on the brakes a little bit and kind of go with what we know for a while, and it seems like this might be one of those issues. They're happy with the Troy Racquet Club in its current existence, and I don't feel it's my position to go against what the people of the community want for that. So, I will be voting to support Troy Racquet Club tonight. I'm not happy about losing a potentially great management company. I, it's, these are the tough decisions we make, and it's tough to have one person come out on top and one person not. It's just difficult, but I'm grateful for all of your input and for the time and resources you've put into this process, and I'm hopeful we can move forward in a positive direction.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank everyone that has sent an email. All were read, they were not responded to, it's been a busy two weeks in the Abraham household. But, I wanted, part of the reason why I wanted to call out that, one, was the sheer quantity of emails, but more so, the passion behind each of those emails, whether you were one side or the other. All the emails were well thought out and articulate, and I thank everyone for sending them, no matter what company you supported. I also want to state that I am not a tennis player. I have no relationship with Mr. Pierce, Mr. Dobson, I don't know any of these parties, so I want to be very clear on that point. Both companies submitted solid proposals and have a solid track record, and they're solid in different ways, and I think Councilman Baker touched on why this becomes a difficult topic and a difficult decision. As an engineer in training, I'm painfully analytical, you can ask anyone I've worked with. In fact, I see someone I work with in the audience right now. And I look at all data, evidence-based decision-making, DFSS, it's a standard core principle. And you look at data that's both quantitative, like revenue, as well as qualitative, which is the intangibles that are very real, but you can't put a number to. So, please be very mindful that I am balancing both of those data types very carefully. Councilman Henderson made reference to the ambulatory services contract a couple years ago, where council actually did vote contrary to staff's recommendation. There's another somewhat recent vote where we, council did vote against staff recommendation, specifically, that's the creative endeavor store at the Troy Community Center. There was a proposal in place, a recommendation to have physical therapy services come into that space where creative endeavors was, where you have a lot of homemade goods sold by Troy residents. And, clearly, the physical therapy business would bring in much more revenue than perhaps some homespun goods. And just like we heard then, is what we're hearing now, is that's not something the community is looking for. I appreciate very much All Court's proposal, but what the community wants is what they already have, and certainly, we can work within the construct of the contract to put some provisions in place regarding ownership and perhaps those capital improvements. But, for those reasons, I will be supporting the Troy Racquet Club.
Thank you. When you go last, generally, everything's said before it gets to you, but a couple points I would like to make. Generally, almost always, I support staff recommendations, because they're the ones that do the vetting for us, they're the ones that go out and do the visits, and they dig deep into the RFP or the RFQ. But, having said that, I think sometimes there is another side to it, rather than looking at numbers and looking at bottom lines. And, I've always been a firm believer that of not changing, don't change for the sake of change. And, I try to do that quite often, but I understand why staff made this recommendation. You know, if you look at the RFP, there is a good reason to do that, and they deserved to be recognized, and they should be proud. And, we did get a lot of emails. I have to tell you, I don't pay too much attention to emails that get personal. I pay attention to the facts and why we should do things and why we shouldn't do things. But, the overriding factor for me in this, looking at everything, and I met with the Weston folks, and I had a great conversation with them, is Mr. Pierce. He is the wild card, he is the man that did this and brought this to our community, and it's been his passion for 40 years. And, Mr. Pierce chose who he wanted to be his successors, and that means a great deal to me. I've never met Mr. Pierce, but I can tell, this is a man that did something because he wanted to do it, he believed in it, and look what we have. So, that's what put me over the edge, is if Mr. Pierce thinks that the Schoens are the people that should continue this tradition in the city, then that's good enough for me. So, Mr. Hamilton, if you want to change and do your motion right now, I think we're ready.
Sure, I'll move to change the recipient of the contract to Troy Racquet Club LLC of Troy, Michigan.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Hamilton, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve H2, as changed by Councilman Hamilton. City Attorney Bloom, at this point, if we like the recommendations and the issues that Councilman Henderson brought forward, would this be a time to include it in a resolution?
We will be bringing back a contract with whoever's awarded, whoever you decide to have us negotiate with, we will be bringing it back to city council for final.
Is there consensus, though, by council to take, make sure that that's the language that's in there? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion on the table? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion passes, congratulations to Troy Racquet Club.
You have to vote on the final, yeah.
One more vote.
Yes, amended, Mayor, sorry.
I know, I know, I got it, I was gonna let them go. Ms. Dixon, could we have a vote on the amended resolution?
Need a move in a second on the amended resolution, the resolution as amended.
I'll move the resolution as amended.
Support.
By Councilman Hamilton, supported by Councilman Pennington, do we approve the resolution as amended? Is there any discussion on that? Councilman Henderson?
We didn't just vote on that?
You voted on the amendment, but you need to vote on the whole resolution with the amendment in it.
Amendment, okay, got it.
The vote?
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes, congratulations. We have two more lengthy business, and with the, I know the building department members have been waiting here, so I am going to move I six forward, change the rules, amend the rules, and move I six forward if there's no objection to council.
Support, yeah.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilwoman Hoderek, that we amend the rules and move I six forward. Any discussion? The vote?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Motion passes. I six is the standard purchasing resolution three, exercise renewal option, building department services. Mr. Miller, if you don't mind, I will introduce SafeBilt members that are here today. We have Steve Burns, the Director of Business Accusations, Jim Testin, Regional Operations Manager for the Midwest, Kristin Mathis, the HR Generalist for the Midwest, Paul Featherstone, Regional Operations Manager for Michigan, congratulations, Randy McClure, Building Official for SafeBilt in Troy, and Dana Self, Deputy Building Official for SafeBilt in Troy. Mr. Miller, did you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Mayor, for bringing this forward, it's kind of like a little bit of a punishment they're here so late. I apologize to you, but I just wanted to show off the SafeBilt team. Just really quick, what this is, is to exercise a renewal option for five years, and this contract started out in 2010 with a three-year contract, and then we renegotiated and added an initial five-year contract, so this is the second five-year period. SafeBilt does a fantastic job for the city of Troy, they combine three different skills, customer service, high technical knowledge in enforcing the code and technology, and they do a great job for us, and our contractual arrangement really is basically risk fee, risk-free. the code and technology. And they do a great job for us, and our contractual arrangement really is basically risk-free because if we have zero building permit fees, they don't make any money. They don't get paid.
I get it. Somebody like to move the resolution, get it on the table, and Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I-6, standard purchasing resolution three, exercise renewal option, building department services.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and supported by Mayor Protam Abraham that we approve I-6, which is the standard purchasing resolution three, exercise renewal option for the building department services as printed in the agenda packet. And I think you'd like to -- you haven't spent all night here. I think you want to say something, I think, right?
We would, but we would keep it brief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Slater, councilmembers, Acting City Manager Mark Miller. For nearly eight years now, we have -- Safebuilt has partnered with the city of Troy, and we believe we've provided high-quality building department services. I think I can speak for my colleagues as well as myself to say that we have enjoyed our relationships working here and with the other departments in this city. We have enjoyed partnering with the city to provide outreach programs such as our annual Tiger Opening Day Party for the employees and the staff here. And also, we offer annual scholarships and a few other things like that. And so we've enjoyed doing that, offer scholarships for students, and we hope to continue to do that in the future. I would also like to say that we are looking forward to a continued solid working relationship with the staff and the administration here and are grateful for the opportunity to do so. Once again, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. If I could just say, I get an opportunity to do a lot of grand openings and ribbon cuts, and I always get positive response from almost everyone that we go to about how great it was to work with the city of Troy and the building permits and the process and how you take their interests to heart. And it's just a pleasure to go to these new businesses and find out all the positive accolades that they give to Safebuilt for making us look good. I was at Zoc recently. We did a ribbon cut at where they do the recycling, and they had nothing but good things to say about the process, and they're all over the country, and they had positive remarks for you, and I just want to pass that along.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we'll deal with regular business from the top. I-1, our board and committee appointments, there are three mayor appointments this evening that I would like to move. First, for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, I would like to move Charles Salget and Joseph Vassello for the terms that expire 4/30/2021, and David Cannon to the Civil Service Commission Act 78 Board for the term that expires 4/30/2024.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Protam Abraham that we appoint Charles Salget, Joseph Vassello to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the terms that expire 4/30/2021, and David Cannon to the Civil Service Commission Act 78 Board for the term that expires 4/30/2024. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes, and thank you to those that are continuing to be on our boards and committees. I-2, there are no board and committee nominations from the mayor position or city council, so we will move. I-3 is no request for closed session this evening. I-4 is the proposed medical marijuana grow operation license ordinance. See, Ellen Mottson is coming here. Did you want him to do that?
Absolutely, mayor. I'm going to defer to Mr. Mottson.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, and members of city council. I have a short presentation regarding the proposed ordinance. I would ask that you hold off questions onto the presentations made because myself and City Attorney Bloom can answer legal questions, but we also have representatives of the police and fire here as well as code enforcement if you have any specific questions relating to police, fire, and code enforcement issues. As you're aware, the proposed ordinance is the Medical Marijuana Grow Operation License Ordinance. If approved by city council, it would be designated as Chapter 104. The purpose and the intent of the ordinance is to provide licensing for the grow operations allowed under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, and it's also to provide regulations for the health, safety, and welfare of all Troy residents. Why are we doing this ordinance now? Was councilors aware? We've spent several months discussing whether or not the city should opt in to allowing the commercial facilities under the Marijuana -- Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. The city recently opted out of doing so. Now, it's appropriate to determine whether or not the city wants to impose regulations on the smaller operations, sometimes referred to as caregiver operations, under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. One of the things that the state law imposes for the commercial facilities is some purity and safety regulations, but there really are no comparable regulations regulating the smaller operations, and so that's another reason the ordinance at this time is appropriate. Another recent change in state law is the Marijuana Tracking Act, which now allows the police department to access the statewide monitoring system to verify primary caregiver registration cards as well as patient registration cards. And with that additional tool, now's an appropriate time to adopt a local ordinance regulating the caregiver operations. The ordinance itself, as I indicated, deals with the grow operations as defined under the Medical Marijuana Act, the smaller operations that allows up to 72 plants per facility. Essentially, the ordinance requires a city license for a grow operation. The current facilities that are now in existence that have a certificate of occupancy for grow operations will be allowed to apply for a license, and they are, of course, eligible for a license. However, the annual license, it is the intent of the ordinance to eventually limit the total number of facilities to 36 licensed operations. However, because we are making all the existing facilities eligible for a license, the ordinance that passed may result in more than 36 initially, but as time goes on, the intent is to get that down to 36. The license would not be required for a medical marijuana patient who cultivates plants in his or her own home if they're doing so in accordance with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. The procedure would require an application be submitted to the city clerk. There would also be an application fee. The proposed fee is $1,500, and that is also a separate ordinance before city council this evening. That's ordinance, an amendment to ordinance, Chapter 60, would change the -- or allow for the application fee of $1,500. Once the application is submitted by each applicant, there's an investigation by police, fire, zoning administrator, the treasurer, and the building official, and then there's a report made. The ordinance requires that applications be approved or denied within 30 days after receipt of a complete application, and if a license is denied, there's an appeal process to the city manager. The ordinance limits the grow operations to 12 plants per patient with a maximum of 72 marijuana plants per facility. Of course, that's consistent with the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. Under the ordinance, the operations must be in the IB zoning, and each facility must be within 1,000 feet of a school or a library or a playground. The ordinance also allows for the police and fire department as well as code enforcement to inspect licensed premises for compliance with the ordinance as well as the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. The ordinance provides the city manager may suspend a license for a violation. A suspension could then be appealed by the applicant to city council, and the city council would then, after a hearing, have the authority to confirm the suspension, revoke the license or, based on the circumstance, reinstate a license. In addition to the possible revocation of a license or suspension of the license for violation, the ordinance also provides misdemeanor penalties in that each separate violation could subject the violator to a misdemeanor crime punishable by up to 90 days in jail or a fine of up to $500. And that in a nutshell is the basics of the ordinance. The council has the whole ordinance in front of it, and if you have any questions, we can address those at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Ellen, and City Attorney Bloom. Some of the questions brought up tonight were about zoning, and I noticed the ordinance says that the operations must be in IB zoning and 1,000 feet from schools, libraries, or playgrounds. Are any of the existing caregiver grow operations outside of those -- or outside of that zoning, outside of the IB zoning as of right now, or within 1,000 feet of schools, libraries, or playgrounds?
I actually don't know the answer to that. Perhaps somebody --
I can just, I can point to the 1,000 feet. It's the drug-free zone, and so that's consistent. That's a federal law and Michigan law as well, so that's why that provision is in there. As to whether or not there is a violation, I believe that they are. The building department certificates of occupancy were for IB zones.
Yeah, I believe that they're all in the IB zoning district. I --
I would concur with that.
Yeah.
I see Paul Evans back there nodding his head.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. That's who's -- Paul could answer that question for you.
So is this a, this isn't a change of zoning law?
No.
Then, so it's --
This is a police power ordinance.
Okay. So the comments made earlier that this requires special notice and it's actually a change in zoning, those are not correct?
That is, that is correct. This is a police power ordinance. It is not under the zoning ordinance. It's not a zoning provision. I would also indicate that we did provide a copy of this ordinance and say that it was going to, kind of a first reading, that was in the last agenda package. So certainly, we absolutely are compliant with the notice provisions.
Any questions or comments? There were, there were three attorneys that came up and asked to delay this, to have an opportunity to address issues that they brought up. I can't remember all of the issues, but hopefully, you wrote those down and you can --
I could address those.
Could you address those?
Yeah.
I'm always willing to postpone if it, you know, if there's an opportunity to meet and discuss, but I have a feeling this one just needs to go to court, to the courts.
The zoning matter has already been answered. Yes, if this was an amendment to the zoning ordinance, it would require a public hearing before the planning commission and before city council, but it's a police power regulatory ordinance, and therefore, we, there's no requirement to comply with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. We actually considered at one time amending the zoning ordinance to address this issue, but it really wasn't the appropriate place. A zoning ordinance provides regulations for the entire city and then provides permitted uses in various areas depending on the zoning. You know, one of the issues we have is the use of marijuana is, it's not legal. I mean, the Medical Marijuana Act does not legalize marijuana, which is a common misconception. What the act actually does is it indicates if people comply with its provisions and have a caregiver card or a patient card, they're immune from prosecution, but it's not, it's still illegal under Michigan federal law. The act merely provides immunity from prosecution. Likewise, because it's not a zoning ordinance, one of the issues brought up was that we have to allow conforming uses to continue. Well, that is a requirement under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, but because it's not a zoning ordinance, the ordinance does not have to provide for the continuation of non-conforming uses. But I would also point out, the ordinance does actually give some preference to the existing uses in that we have put in the ordinance, the existing operations are eligible for the license. The, I know one of the attorneys brought up the case of the Charter Township of York versus Miller. It is a recent case, but it's a preemption case, and yes, we agree that a city ordinance is preempted by state law if the city ordinance prohibits something that's allowed by state law. This ordinance does not prohibit people from using medical marijuana. It just provides regulations. The York case specifically involved a ruling that the zoning ordinance in that case prohibited the outdoor cultivation of marijuana. That's why that ordinance, and that was deemed preempted by state law. This ordinance that we have does not prohibit outdoor cultivation. Yes, there's an indication that there has to be compliance with the home occupation provisions of the zoning ordinance if you're having an operation in your residence, but if you comply with the Michigan Medical Marijuana law with regard to outdoor cultivation, that would be in compliance with the home occupation provisions. So it does not, it's not preempted because it doesn't prohibit anything that's allowed under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. I think I may have addressed the issues that have been raised. I don't know if --
City Attorney Bloom?
Just one other thing, too, and I want to make sure that this is really clear. We are very cognizant of the concerns about the confidentiality of the patients and the caregivers and also the locations, and so the ordinance does not allow for this information to be disclosed. It is to be used only for purposes of enforcing the act, and it is not something that is going to be available outside of just that enforcement. So we will enact those protections. And so that was another concern that was, that was raised, and so I just wanted to alert council that we had, in fact, anticipated that and have, have taken care of that.
Is there a reason why we chose $1,500? Is that consistent with other licenses that we have in the city similar to this?
It, based on the amount of inspections, fire, police, as well as code enforcement, it was deemed an appropriate amount. I know we have fees for smoking lounges, but I don't recall specifically what that fee is, but I think it is comparable.
Massage licenses as well, and other communities. We've also looked at other communities as well.
And could you just tell me why we chose 36? Why we chose that number? Half of what we have, or what?
Again, if you, if you do the numbers, you know, I think it was thought that there will be a lot of the caregiver establishments right now that will choose to operate a facility. And so we think that some of our caregivers are probably not going to be remaining in the city. We think that there will be a little bit of a migration away from the city because the facilities are probably where you can make the greater amount of money. So also, we did do some calculations as to the number. You know, if you take 36 and they're allowed to do up to, you know, to accommodate to six patients, really, the saturation there, it's one per every, I can't remember the number. I think, Ellen, you have it, but one for every, what, 200?
I think it's 377 persons. One, one operation for every 377 persons when you consider the fact that each facility could serve up to six people and divide that by the population, and that's including the entire population, obviously. So if you take children, for instance, out of the mix, it would actually be a lower number.[1797.62] number.
Councilman Henderson?
And just to clarify that, the number, the 36 number, that doesn't preclude, if we had 70 of them, them from year to year applying for their license, correct?
Initially, we might have more than 36 because we are, we will allow the current facilities to apply for a license, and if they're eligible, meet all the requirements, a license will be issued. So let's say that for the first year, we have 40, just hypothetically, 40 licenses. Next year, if all 40 reapply and they're all eligible, we would exceed the 36, and there won't be any additional licenses. However, if we lose 10 facilities by attrition and we're down to 30 that apply for a new license, if those 30 are eligible and receive a license, then six new applicants could apply and receive a license.
The way I look at this, if you're in the city and you've built a business here for medical marijuana, you could continue in the city the way it is.
Assuming that you meet all of the qualifications, which we're assuming that they, that they will, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? Councilman Hoderick?
Just, I know this has been a lot of work. There was a team, team that came together and looked at this very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone like to move the resolution? Thank you. Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move I-4, proposed medical marijuana grow operation license ordinance as written.
Support. By Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I-4, the proposed medical marijuana grow operation license ordinance as presented in the agenda packet and printed. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker--
Discussion.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-5 is an executive search for city manager. City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, Mayor. This is an item for moving forward with a search firm, an executive search firm for the city manager position, and you'll notice that there is a blank in the resolution. And the reason that there's a blank in the resolution is because this is something that City Council gets to decide. And we did provide all of the proposals to you. Unfortunately, we didn't get them until Thursday, so you've not had a whole lot of time. But obviously, we're prepared to, there is a resolution there that you could move for one of those search firms if you would like. We also would be happy to facilitate interviews, especially if you've narrowed it down to a couple of them. If that's what you choose to do, we will accommodate you in any way that you direct us to accommodate you.
Thank you. Typically, we don't have a discussion on an item unless it's been moved and seconded to the table. Is anyone looking to do that? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I-5, executive search city manager as printed in the agenda packet.
Well, you have to fill in the blank.
Oh. Oh. Reread that. Resolve, the Troy City Council hereby awards a contract as a result of the best value process to the executive search firm of, and I'll pick one, Strategic Government Resources of Keller, Texas. At the proposal pricing contained in the bid tabulation, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. Be it finally resolved that the award is contingent upon the firm's submission of properly executed proposal and contract documents, satisfactory references, insurance certificates, and all other specified requirements.
Support. By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve I-5 as read into the record by Councilman Henderson. Discussion, Councilman Henderson.
Sure. So I read all these, and they make really good reading, but there was one that I absolutely threw out of my decision process, and that's the Amy Sell LLC. It just didn't seem like they were a real seasoned company, and they didn't have a lot of, a lot of references compared to the others. Strategic Government Resources seemed to float to the top, but the other three looked pretty good, too. So I'm open for anybody else's ideas.
Thank you. Councilman Pennington?
We just got this information. I would move that we table this to next meeting.
Well--
After we vote on it.
After we vote on it?
Well, no, I'd like to amend it, actually.
We have 120 days, and-- Well, there's a motion on the table to table it. Is there a second?
I'd support.
Pardon me?
I would support.
Moved by Councilman Pennington, supported by Mayor Protem Abraham, that we table the item until next meeting. Discussion.
Can we meet our deadline?
Mayor, as to that, it is possible that we could appoint Mr. Miller instead of enacting city manager. He could be appointed as city manager. You do have that opportunity, and then that would extend your deadline.
I understand that. I spent almost four hours Sunday night reading this to make sure that I was prepared for this evening. I understand that not everyone can do that, but I would like to, I would like to do this tonight so that we, we get this done in time. We actually had one, I think MML said they couldn't meet the deadline, which surprised me that they would say that. If we extend it even further, then I'm not so sure that, I think the only solution would be to promote acting city manager to manager. That's the only probably option if we do this. But I'm prepared to move forward tonight. Any discussion on tabling?
So--
Take the vote, then. Councilman Hoderick?
So we can all, if we table, we can't make the deadline as required by charter unless we've pointed-- I'm trying to make sure, I'm sorry, I'm tired. I'm trying to make sure I understand what the answer is. I support the idea of tabling it and processing this more and understanding more how we need to proceed, but I also understand we're under a deadline. We can't, we can't meet that deadline if we table. Is that the answer?
Yes, it is going to be difficult for them. Based on the proposals, they're going to need as much time as possible, and two weeks could make a difference. So yes, there would need to be an appointment of a city manager, very likely. It could be a temporary appointment.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the timeline on, on one of these. It's possible that two weeks wouldn't, wouldn't do that, but-- Councilman Pennington?
We are probably going to run up to, up to that deadline anyway, aren't we? So we're going to have to point, even if we appoint one of these firms to, for the process?
Some of them so that they could meet the deadline to get somebody in. Some of them said that in their proposals.
What is that deadline, by the way? I'm sorry.
The Charter says 120 days.
Which is when?
So it'd be 120 days from March 11th.
July 11th?
Late Julyish.
Okay.
I'm not positive, but I thought everyone said that they could do it by July 1st, except MML, but I'm not sure. Mayor Protem Abraham?
Thanks, Mayor. This is a big decision we have ahead of us, and I just want to make sure all seven of us are prepared to have that conversation, to make the decision. I did spend some quality time with the binders yesterday, but I want to make sure all seven of us have that opportunity. You know, Mr. Savage spoke, you know, earlier today and stressed the importance of selecting the right individual, and the selection of the right individual starts with the selection of the firm that's going to help us and guide us and put together the best package so that we can get the best candidates. So that's why I'm supporting the extension.
Councilman Henderson?
So each of these, each of these candidates or proposed candidates for the recruitment, I think it would be safe to assume that we're probably going to get, if not the exact same potential managers, but we'll at least get an overlap. So it would be very similar candidates. And again, I, you know, I only had one that I had any real heartache over. The rest of them were, you know, I mean, they all come well-referenced, and they have good quality cities that they've worked for, good quality candidates. And I, I mean, we did this pretty easily the last time. Attorney Bloom, did, did we go through the same process and select a company, or did that come recommended by you? That we just, I don't recall that process. I thought we were just handed here, this is, who's going to do this for you?
No, the selection is done by the City Council.
Okay, so we did go through this process. My memory just slips me on, on a process.
We probably helped facilitate it a little bit more, but we didn't, and this is one where we did ask for the proposals, and then we'll do whatever council needs us to do.
I think we only had three last time, maybe. There wasn't a big pool of companies, I don't think, but I think Mayor Protem Abraham makes a good point. If one of the council members feels that they need a, need two weeks, then I think we should go for two weeks. Councilman Henderson?
Can we delay the appointment of city manager for an extra two weeks towards the end of the process if we feel we're not getting to that point?
As long as there's action taken within 120 days, then, then you are satisfying the demands of the Charter.
So at 110 days, then, if we feel that we're not quite there, but we're close to that, then we can say, you know, maybe extend it for another month and--
Yes.
Would we need to contact each of these firms and see if they're, they're still willing to participate in this if we delay it two more weeks?
Well, there's no guarantee that there would be an award made tonight, so I think that all of them would still be, be willing to, to proceed.
Okay. Any discussion on postponing for two weeks? Councilman Baker?
Just a quick comment. I think that if, if one of us needs more time, we all should need more time. That's a fair thing. And I think that the idea that, knowing that we still have an opportunity to extend it by appointing temporary, or whatever we want to call it, for acting city manager makes sense. I think that kind of works, and it means we've bought ourselves some time, and as long as we can all commit to really focusing on, so we don't want to let this drag on and on. I don't think that's the smart thing to do, and I can support that.
Reset?
Yeah.
The vote, Ms. Dixon? On the postponement?
On postponing to the next meeting?
Yes.
Right. Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. There's a yellow sheet that was placed on council table referencing J-7. There was just a typo in the Sidwell, should be Sidwell number 88-20-11, as indicated on. Having said that, does any council member wish to pull on consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda, also the reflective changes on the yellow sheet as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Hamilton, did we approve all items on the consent, consent agenda item, including J-7 that was amended with the yellow sheet at the table? Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item, they've all been approved. Next, our memorandums and future council agenda items. There is a public hearing announcement, K-1A, May 7, 2018, the adoption of the 2018-19 annual city budget and three-year budget, 2018-19-20, 19-20, and 2020-21. Public comment for item is not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see any this evening. There are no council referrals. Council comments? Councilman Baker?
I know it's been a long night, but I, because of the timelinesses, I just, if anyone's still watching or watches later, I wanted to, if you didn't know, Jim Warpatinsky passed away this past week, and Jim was a very active and gracious part of our community, serving from everyone, from the youth to the seniors, everybody in between. He was often here at the council meetings. He used to come to the council meetings with his wife, Susan, who passed away before him, so I know he's with her now. His specific wishes were not to have any formal funeral services, and there weren't any, but we are working on putting together a casual celebration of life for Jim. And once we have that date coordinated and that information, I'll make sure it's disseminated as best I can. I know others on council will help disseminate, as well as Cindy Stewart and other means. So we miss you, Jim, and thank you for all you did for the city.
Thank you. Any, any other council comments? Next are reports. Any comments on the reports in the agenda packet this evening? We already handled Q1. There is no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you for--